Okay, I call the meeting in a more organic nation to order and we will start with the Friday week.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item of business will be public comment and I'll just put over the rules on that. If you have, if you have, if the public wants to make a comment about county business, this is about county business, this is a time to do it. You have three minutes, each person will have three minutes. And we ask, it's not a question and answer, it's just time for the public to comment. So, we ask that you keep it civil, don't get personal, and that's, that's the rules of it. So, first we'll go with anybody in the room, then we'll go with people on Zoom. Is there anyone in the room that wants to comment? Yes. And then, oh, one other thing, one last thing, just state your name and if you're with an organization, where you're from, and if you're with an organization, that too, so we know that.
Jody Ferguson, Lexington resident, that's my capacity of speaking today. I'd like to comment about the increase in cost for the interim ambulance service for Northeast ASA, commonly known as IRIGAN. If you look at the original contract, it does not state that there would not be staffing in IRIGAN during the night shift. All three locations in the contract have the same statement of two ambulances available with one staff with two full-time employees, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and ALS support. The Northern, known as Boardman, and the Southern, known as Hepner Lexington I M, started this contract with the correct staffing. So I'm not sure why it didn't happen in IRIGAN when it was the reality in the other ASAs and expected by county residents. If we're going to increase the payment for IRIGAN to cover rent, electric, water, internet, gym memberships, whatever, which I'm not sure why we're paying those expenses, then I'd like to suggest that we reduce the cost for South County. When this contract started, we had two ambulances in Hepner, and now, not only do we only have one ambulance, but we also have a thirty-minute delay on all second-out calls. And Morrell County Health District's QRTs and Hepner Lexington I M Fire are covering the thirty-minute delay because we care about the community members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the, uh, the audience here in the room that wants to speak? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, yes, two people. Who's the one that I don't allow?
Tiffany W. is there. I'll allow them to start the videos.
Yeah, there's another one over there.
And Ryan.
Oh, that's Tiffany. Okay, Tiffany, yeah, you're on, go ahead. Did you hear us? Okay, well, we'll come back to her if she gets on, see if we can, if she has something. And then, next one is.
Ryan Hill. Ryan Hill.
Ryan, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, sir, do y'all hear me in the room there?
Yes.
All right, perfect. I just wanted to take some time and give y'all an update on the wagon trail, solar project, as well as follow-up from the FSX hearing last Thursday in Boardman. So, first off, I just want to apologize that I'm not there in person. I kind of have some family stuff I need to take care of on the East Coast here. And then I also want to apologize that, you know, I think I could have coordinated a little closer with the county and kept y'all on the loop, specifically to our agricultural mitigation agreement. You know, I just got so caught up talking to the farmers, the landowners, and other stakeholders within Morrell County that I don't think I really closed the loop as, as well as I should have. And that was really the big topic of conversation on Thursday is, you know, comparing our agricultural mitigation agreement, which consists of a five-hundred-thousand-dollar lump sum payment prior to the start of construction to split between Moore County grain growers to support facility upgrades, and then also to Larry Lucher, who is in charge of the OSU Extension Office out there to further his research in dryland wheat agriculture. And I think that the big issue is just the difference in amount of money between us and the Sunstone project. And the key difference is the purpose of our mitigation fund is to offset the change in spending in the agricultural economy within Morrell County, whereas the Sunstone project is to account for the reduction of spending. As you all know, we have a great relationship out there, and, you know, we contact Mike Brosman, Butter Creek Spraying, and he buys all his chemicals locally. And we did the same analysis that Sunstone did, and what we kind of came down to is we found our impact in the indirect agricultural economy in Moore County. And then we took our actual spending of what we're spending out there now with Weed Ridge Solar, and through our weed treatment program, we will be spending more money than, uh, per acre than it takes people to farm dryland wheat. And so, you know, it's not any loss of spending within the within the community, it's really a change in the type of spending, which would still be at the same vendors, whether it's Moore County grain growers, which Mike buys about seventy percent of his chemicals from, or other local agricultural stores. And obviously, I'll stay on if anybody has any comments or questions. I just wanted to kind of highlight the key difference between us and the Sunstone project.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Ryan. And like I said at the top, the comment period isn't really a time that I'm giving and taking, I'm talking back to you now. It isn't really a question-answer period, it's more of a just a so if you want to be on the agenda and do a little more deep talk with the commission, make sure you get ahold of that, our administrator, okay? And we'll schedule it if you want to do that.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to get on here and a little bit of time just because, right, that sec clock is ticking and y'all's comments are due, our comments are due, and so we're all on the clock, so I get it.
Yeah, understand. It's, you asked for questions, but this is really not where we do that, you know? We have something on the agenda, then we do like a talk with the person, you know, so that's the way we've always done it, that, so. But we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, um, Tiffany, you hear us, Tiffany?
Tiffany, are you there?
Okay, no, I don't hear anything from her, so you see anybody else with hand raised?
No.
Okay, so we'll close out the public comment section, and then we'll move on to number three, our administrative report, ambulance service plan update, Matt, let me get that to you.
For some reason, our gallery is not showing. Did an update, I don't require references.
Can you just click on the participants on the lower bar?
It doesn't look like we have any other hands raised. It should be at the top, is there any? Okay. All right, um, as far as the administrative update, just wanted to let, um, let the commission know with the ambulance service plan update. Applications were due on Monday at two o'clock, we received two applications. Well, we received applications for the three different ambulance service areas from two different. We are just reviewing those applications this week. We are organizing our review committee. Right now, I haven't sent out the official invitation. There's one person that we're just trying to work through the scheduling issue on, but we are looking to most likely have that meeting next Wednesday. Our initial meeting there, and we're getting the, uh, the applications out to them by the end of this week so they can start reading through those. And so, um, the, working on that. Our original goal was to have it by the June nineteenth meeting, which is now been moved to June eighteenth. That might be a little bit aggressive, owing to the fact that our first meeting isn't until the twelfth, and we'll likely need to meet with the applicants to go through and confirm a few items. And so as we do that, we might be looking at either a special meeting towards the end of June or July, or getting that determination by June or July third. A special meeting by the end of June or a, um, having it by the third. We'd really like to have it set up and notifications out so the providers can take over on July seventeenth, which is when the new ASP goes into effect and we can handle those orders. So, we're still working towards that timeframe. But just want to let you know, we do have two proposals, two proposers in, in, and for all three areas. Other items, just want to let you know, we've been working hard on, on discussions between state and state, federal, and local partners on the nitrate issue. Last night, I attended the Oregon City Council meeting just to review with them some of the efforts, mainly because they will be part of the solution on a couple of the options. And we didn't want to get the cart before the horse, and we wanted to make sure that the city council was aware of that and that they're acceptable of those considerations. By and large, they were. They, we relayed to them that this is the county trying to take a leadership role, not come through with the solutions, but help effect solutions that are being funded and made possible through state and federal programs and, and also donations and partnerships with local stakeholders. So, again, we're just reiterating the county's leadership role. And, but speaking on the Westland air, uh, community, that's one thing that the Oregon City may have a direct solution for, and so we just went through with them. Speaking with some of our state, state individuals and that, we are are targeting for by the end of July to have a meeting with the Westland community, having translators and not just a listening session, but to actually talk, let's talk solutions, let's see what's acceptable, what they're willing to, to participate in, because it it is something where they do need to participate in, they need to understand that there might be some impacts on on their property ownership there as far as paying for some of these solutions or ongoing service of those solutions, and just getting them up to speed on things. We're working very steadfast with several different organizations that have interest in that and trying to build some rest and bridges that, that have come down over the last few years just because of the contentiousness of the, of the issue. And so we're, we're tentatively working for, Courtney Crowell with the governor's office has put the county in touch with Williamette Partners, which is a, um, they're kind of a, um, I'm sorry, Tamara, what would you say best explains Williamette Partners organization?
Um, they're a nonprofit advocacy group, and they specialize in, um, being to issues, public issues that are controversial and try, they're a nonpartisan, non-bias, neutral party, and they try to understand the issues and kind of path forward for whatever problem is there.
So, yeah.
They started actually in dealing with water, but they're not unique to the alignment value, they do work throughout the state.
And Courtney Crowell put us in touch with that, that group. The nice thing is, is being a third-party, come in and kind of mediate, mitigate some of the, some of the relationships and, and provide an outsider viewpoint. The nice thing is, is also, it appears that we could engage with them and it would not be a cost to the county that there's funding through Oregon DQ and the governor's office that would be able to cover any of the, any of the charges for their participation mattered. So, while we don't have an official contract with them, we've had initial conversations just to see if that's an option. We'll be bringing back updates to the, to the commission as we formalize those and consider that. Again, I acknowledge that the commission's preference on this is to fully reiterate that this is not the county's fault, that, that we don't have a regulatory responsibility on this issue, but that, and, but I do appreciate the commission acknowledging that with all the federal and the state scrutiny, that they are not in a position to affect true projects and solutions. And that's one thing that we, we may have to undertake as long as we don't get in over our heads and take full responsibility for the issue. So we are trying to walk a fairly careful course on this, but it's amazing to see some of the partnerships and the interested organizations that are there to to offer aid and, and help facilitate some of these things. So we've been working through, through that recently. Was well-received by the Oregon City Council, they had several questions, but they are open to the idea of being a service provider for water and possibly receipt of sewer from the Westland area, that's the solution that works out best.
Okay, um, this kind of time here is something to do, but you started. I want to talk a little bit about, about this and try to throw an idea out there to the commissioners and, and you guys to think about is, um, you know, I, I like what we're doing, I like the way we're handling it, you know? We're using the county's grain growers, just like, that was, that was what I wanted to do. But moving forward, I, I, I don't want us to think of Westland as a one ounce. There's going to be other, other solutions needed as we move down the line. I just kind of like to think about and talk about, and I'm talking about about this, is what kind of structure or what kind of thinking do we do as we move on to the next, so to speak, Westland, or the next well that needs to be drilled, you see what I'm saying? Think about how we do this. My suggestion was, you know, Jeff's on the broadband consortium is, is maybe, maybe a water consortium. I think the port, to be honest, I think the port should be involved with this, you know? They're, they're tied, and I would feel better if they were part of working through these solutions. Plus, we'd also set up an organization where, well, just like broadband, where we take the, uh, the grants, you know, and we have an administrator, I don't want to name any names that might be going to be our administrator, or maybe one of our staff would be the administrator, just like we have, you know, Green, and so I'm proposing that as maybe a way to think about it. Matt, you know, the first funding, one of the first funding we got for the Westland was possibly, I don't know if possibly, but if it's committed, the fines, the EQ level on the board might be able to be used. Well, I propose, or I talked to him about this, you know, consortium, you know, modeled after the broadband, because I think it works pretty good. And we don't want to, the county doesn't want to own a water system just like the broadband, we don't want to own an ISP, when we are providing the structure for other people to get things done. And we have that structure, we have that stability, you know, we have finance, we have management, we have Tamara's knowledge. So we have those things. So that's what I would like to think about, but I was informed that the port cannot have be part of dispersing the funds that they, that were, that were levied upon them to find, so they, they, consortium, I guess, wouldn't work in this field. But I still want to think about whether it's this idea or something else. Think about the next step, because as our, as our water engineers get rolling here, they're going to be finding more solutions, more places, you know, for all these. How are we going to handle them? Is this the model where the county is out front doing it, and then as I said, I'm going to say, if the work in the county should have a, have a group thing to tackle these, you know? That's, anyway. You know, working with Matt for about his administrative report?
I know. So, in the Westland meeting at the end of July, we have a solid date? We don't. This was something that we just discussed with, with Williamette Partners, there's a few things they need to pull together. We'd like to have that conversation before the Business Oregon Technical Studies are started, just so if there's things we rule out, we just rule them out as, 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 you know, don't spend the money on those. Hopefully, we could get, um, get a date in the next week or so. I'd, I'd like to be sure to have a date by our next Board of Commission meeting so we can publicize and get invites out to the residents and make it open to other people. As far as location, you know, whether it's Riverside High School or one of, one of the elementary schools there, it'd be nice to be a little closer to the community. But we haven't made those arrangements yet, so we're shooting for that goal. We'll, we'll firm that up over the next two weeks. Yeah, I just want to make a point, I will be out of the states from the tenth of July to the nineteenth of July. Okay, we'll make it towards the later part of it, because we appreciate your expertise on this water issue.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Open agenda, is there anything the commission has to add?
No.
Okay. Then, stuff we have, set agenda. Three items there. Any of you want to pull out and talk about?
No, I'm going to leave the center agenda.
Go to the second, I didn't hear the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, both are good, we're good to consider. Next up, we have two public hearings. The first one is we get this done, just, the first one would be county use of Title III funds, search and rescue vehicle project. Kevin, well, I'm not, what I want to do is I want to open the public hearing that hasn't staffed before, okay? Then we're going to have the public comment, just like a regular hearing. So give me a second here and beneficially open up this public hearing. We got to get the title of this, I think I read it. No, that would be changed.
It'd be one for the
Through this one, yeah, I didn't.
Oh, nothing.
Well, I don't get to see that, I have to act, what I'm doing. The lawyer didn't like to hear that. Whoa, hold on there, buddy. We'll wait until he gets back, because I want to make sure I get this, this hearing done correctly. We'll hold on for a minute here, hold tight with us. And, okay. I just, what did I just do, like a regular hearing, just
That's exactly.
Open and read the title, our staff report.
There's no rule.
Public input. Closing, fishing and decision.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, um, I would like to open the, uh, a public hearing on the county use of Title III funds, search and rescue vehicle project. And the hearing's open, we'll start with our staff report, Kevin.
Morning, Kevin, it's Finance Director. Um, so this is the public hearings following the opening of the comment period that was done on the April third, twenty-twenty-four board meeting. It was a forty-five-day public comment period that was open, those were posted on our website. Administrator's office advised that there were no written comments submitted. So the next step in the process to authorize the use of funds would be to finish public hearing and take any public testimony, I didn't consider or act them, I didn't put the verbiage for potential motion, should the following the hearing, as a word, wish to proceed.
Okay, any questions of, Ron? Staff, you know, this? Okay, so we'll open up public comment. Now, is there anybody in the room that wants to comment on this, uh, the Title III funds, uh, for search and rescue? Okay, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to comment? Raise your hand. Okay, we don't, we don't see anybody. So we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and then the commissioners will decide. I'd like to the special indecision, whatever.
Well, I'll move to obligate Title III funds up to the budget amount of one hundred and one thousand six hundred and eight dollars for the procurement and helping the new search and rescue vehicle from our governor's office. I'll second.
Move to secondary, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, both in favor. Thanks, Kevin. And next up. Okay, next, we're going to have a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget as approved by the Morrell County Budget Committee. I will first off call for, I'll open the public hearing, and then I'll call for any extensions or conflicts of interest from the commissioners. We wanted to clear. Okay, next, we will have, as before, we'll have our staff report from Kevin.
So this is the final step in the budget process for the fiscal year ending due thirty twenty-twenty-five. The budget that has been posted in the exact times on our website along with notice of this hearing, is the approved budget that came out of the Budget Committee, which is also as proposed, moving into the Budget Committee, so a little bit of different format, the form LB1 is an official format that we have to utilize for the notice of budget hearing. I've also included a resolution to make appropriations and impose and categorize property taxes for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Any questions to staff? Any, uh, any testimony from the public inside the room about the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget, proposed budget? Okay, Tiffany, you have some input on the, but this is for the budget now. It's a topic. You have input on it? So, anybody else have any testimony they want to give, public testimony about the twenty-twenty-five budget? We don't have any, so we'll close the public testimony, and then the commission will make the decision. Discussing, entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, move to, certainly, resolution R twenty-two-four-dash-eleven, adopting the budget, making appropriation, imposing categories, taxes for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Second.
And we'll move to secondary, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion for. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, now we get into our business items. Seven A, signing in the new circuit court facility, discussion and determination, Matt, you're going to lead this.
Okay. Checking to see if our project managers on, as in what they've, they've joined at this time. I'd like to, um, from our previous, uh, Board of Commissioners meetings in the Town Hall, we were asked to, as staff and design team, go back and do some finalization of the estimates on areas. We've submitted a, a press sheet, I'll pull that up shortly. We are also tasked with quantifying and getting written commitments from the port and the city of Hepner, who had offered to provide some contributions for consideration for mill site. Um, we recognize uh, city manager John Doherty, who's here with the uh, city of Hepner. And uh, Lisa Middles Dorf is, is out on vacation, just left yesterday, and so she wasn't here. I'm not sure if uh, Chair Taylor was going to be joining. Um. He isn't here in the audience, so I'm hoping that he'll pop up there. Um, in writing, uh, we have received an eight hundred thousand dollar commitment from uh, the city of Hepner to help pay for infrastructure there. This is um, I do want to acknowledge this as a, a significant uh, act for uh, for Hepner. As mentioned in the email that was attached with the, with the packet, that can represent over ten percent of their annual budget. And so that's their commitment in having the um, the courthouse stay in the south. Um, if it's not to be at the uh, at the air ground site, they'd like to make sure it stays south and, and at the uh, Kinzu Mill Site, and are willing to help alleviate some of the impact on them. The port, while we didn't get anything in writing, uh, Chair Sykes and I were at their um, their special meeting last Friday, and the commitment that they had a motion on that was passed was to provide five hundred thousand dollars in kind donation for the installation of the water lines. And uh, of course, the transfer of parcels of land for sufficient for the circuit court. Um, and so that, that was a motion that was approved and is on their, on their minutes. Unfortunately, uh, they, they had committed to send me something in writing, but we did not receive that in time to include in with the packet. Um, with that, I'd like to um, to share. Um. Second. This is the updated um, the updated uh, pricing chart, and it's fairly readable on this. So I'll zoom in just a little bit more, just to see if that helps. Um, and this includes the uh, the consideration um, from uh, the port and from Hepner. Um, as, as we talked with the port, their uh, suggestion, as we looked at it, uh, was to connect to the water system of the city of Hepner, gives us reliable treated water that's, that's uh, that's there. And their uh, their suggestion was to go with a septic bill rather than connecting to the Hepner sewer. But I, um, that, that provides um, a few advantages. First of all, the cost is fairly comparable, but um, it, one of the issues, if we were to put in um, a, a system for the sanitary sewer, we would either have to have a pressurized system or a series of lift stations on there. The lift station solution, um, the city of Hepner checked in with their engineering and their public work, and they figured that um, the series of lift stations that would be required would probably be about seventy thousand dollars a year in annual operation and maintenance cost, um, which for a single user is quite cost prohibitive. Um, we'd have to work something out on that. And um, while they didn't say that would all be flipped to the core, it would be an ongoing cost that would impact things that would have to be figured out. Um, both of these commitments are made contingent on the county if they choose the site and then entering into some kind of uh, intergovernmental agreement. So the details of this will be, uh, will be finalized if the uh, Kinzu site is determined. Uh, now, from uh, on this pricing, you'll see one of the comments is, when we did the mill site, we consolidated all in one site, and our design team separated into two. Um, still, our preferred location is the southeast location, uh, nearest to the Gulf Coast and nearest to the uh, to the water uh, supply, so it would reduce costs there. So if you look at this, the first sheet that we have is using option A for water to the site from Hepner and option with A, A for the sewer to connect to the city sewer. And so what this looks like with the contributions in and from the city and the Port of Morro is the cost to the county for the Kinzu Mill Site. Uh, the known costs is eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars as a uh, a section there. If we were to go to the northwest side, not preferred secondary, if this one were, weren't to work out, the cost would increase mainly per distance to one point four two five million. Uh, boardmen and fairgrounds, the known cost on that, we'd already hooked in connections to municipal uh, water and sewer, so no adjustment on cost for those two sites. Um, the unknowns here, um, as we look at this, um, some of this does change. The um, the biggest thing is, of course, site selection analysis, we've lost several months. Now, a hundred thousand dollars a month. Um, some people said that's way, way too high, but it's conservative. We don't know, I mean, construction bids are uh, the construction costs are still going up, and so uh, they're leveling actually a bit, but um, they're still increasing, and so. Um. Not without going out of the screen. So, um. So, um, fairground site, we've lost three months, we're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar impact to the uh, to the project. Going to the mill site would be an additional, uh, approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. This would be three additional months of uh, work on the environmental survey, um, and geotech exploration. They can be done at the same time. Um, but um, so that's an additional three months that we would lose, plus the cost of, of the geotech and the environmental needs that's necessary. Um, the North website is similar in those. However, if we were to do an option one and option two, then you'd see additional months of, of delay there. Uh, boardman, we would just have to do the geotech. Uh, the environmental uh, is, is fairly known at that site, so we're just looking at whatever additional delays for the environment side. So, for this one, uh, the best price that we can consider for the uh, committed fund sources right now is um, for the southeast Kinzu Mill Site, we're looking at one point two million dollars over the fairground site and one point eight million dollars for the northeast side over the fairground side. So, um, boardman does have that, that additional cost of six hundred and thirty thousand. If you look at the one point five two, the uh, as we go to the uh, the the ports uh, suggested option, which would be water to Hepner uh, sewer on site, it reduces the cost fairly significantly. Uh, we get down to numb cost to be less than six hundred and fifty thousand for the southeast and um, just over nine hundred thousand dollars for the northwest side. This brings down the uh, the Kinzu Mill Site to just uh, over a million dollars for the southeast side, additional budget cost, and uh, one point three million dollars for the northwest side, if possible. Um, just want to reiterate from staff and design team uh, consideration that southeast location in the Kinzu Side would be the preferred if we look at the mill site. Uh, if we, if we were set on putting it at the mill site, no matter what, we would look at that one first and then look at the, look at the northwest one if the commission wanted to, to come in that direction. At this time, uh, with these costs, um, we're looking for determination from the, from the commission on uh, on which sites need to go, and so with that, we're looking forward to the conversation with you and turn it back over to Chair Stott.
Yeah, let me throw an idea out there that you guys can see that, as far as the process to provide a bit. My thinking was to pick two sites. No, I'm not looking at, I mean, I, I, I don't have to ask yours. Is, is that agreeable? Then with those two, we discuss the top two, then we vote on those. If that's how we can look to you, or do you want to deal with? See, I'm not looking at the mill site. So, I mean, you could, I guess, four sites. We have four sites, two at the mill and.
Yeah, four different prices.
Or do you want to just go you know, say, okay, we're gonna pick one site at the mill, and then so then we actually have two sites. The mill, the fair, the boardman. Want to do that, or you want to go four sites, with two at the mill?
Oh, I think bottom, when it gets to what you were talking about, is pick the top two sites.
Uh, yeah, I want to, I want to pick, pick the top two sites, but do you want to deal with the mill as separate sites, or, because yeah, so that's my thought. Do you want, or do you want to look at them as, 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 as is just pick one of the mill sites and deal with that, and then pick the top two out of that? Or just go ahead and say, let's pick top two sites out of these two.
That's, that's it.
All right. Is that okay to pick top two and then vote on?
That, that's one, ultimately, you're gonna, that's where you're going to get to, so, yeah.
Yeah. But then we can narrow that down to two, and then have a deeper talk about that, so. Do you, do you want to, DRZ on?
I mean, um, let me see if they can.
Well, I guess with our discussion, you could open and talk in the mat or with DR, if somebody's on there, or John Seer from the school. Um, or me and Matt, or the board meeting was kind of, very simple, straightforward, I think, for basic policy. Do, do you want to talk about, let's, you know, talk about these first, and then uh, maybe, because we have new information down, first. Really important, uh, shoes.
So after my conversation with DLR, the site, the specific site in Portland isn't very optimal. It's an industrial zone, started fostering from the processing plant, is, is fairly close to like the Sage Center and that stuff, so I mean, it's, it's, but I think it's kind of out of the way, and I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that particular site in boardman. So, that's just my point of view on that particular site there. Not saying there's, you know, potential for other options in Portland, but uh, right now, that site, I don't believe would be the first site for me.
And anyone throwing in the mix here?
Well, I guess on that note, you know, the, at the mill site, many of those are in an industrial piece around, and we keep hearing people talk about wanting to bring industry in there. And as far as, you know, the industrial impact, the, the Fordman site, there's literally across the street, there's a wreck, kitty corner, there's Fordman wreck sites, you know, so I don't know that in my mind, the industrial impact is that huge, you know, there's. So.
What should box out the, the new figures with the contributions from these two? You know, they're, they're willing to get some skin in this game, so what's your thoughts on that? Does it make the sites more attractive? They don't have to make uh, you know, but I don't know, I could ask, you know, talk about that.
Still got a huge unknowns, yeah. The geotechnical and what, what possibly drive up cost of foundations and everything else up there. If you open up the ground and contamination is responsible for their abating that, it's just a lot of unknowns.
Right.
Yeah, and you end up with a super unlinked situation there, we do. Love the statement.
The property.
Yeah.
Because we wouldn't take ownership until we get a clean bill of health, you know.
But that process puts us behind again.
Right, it does. We are against the timeframe. Yeah, and you know, you, you know, there's one bottom to do is, I mean, we don't have, we could say, you know, one of them was contingent. Well, I guess it's contingent on any, any of the sites that uh, that the fairgrounds is the only one that's, that, that has a geo that is ready to go. So, I guess any of the other three, or however you look at it, is contingent on what was found out. So, do you, do you want to? Uh, and I guess that builds in, if you pick one of the sites.
And the potential on the northeast situation is the, the extra distance that you'd have to take the water and sewer is gonna go right through what we know is that's the previous grounds that were used for dumping, and that all affects what even date. Because it isn't just construction, and you break ground if you find something, you have issues. So, you got all that extreme. So I think the northeast, right off the top, should go.
I agree.
My, my first.
Uh, I don't know what's the big advantage of that, so it is.
No, lots of disadvantages. It does look like the southeast site is fairly, you know, coming right into that corner where you know, if there was some contamination, it would be a smaller area than that.
Right. Would you agree with that, Jeff?
Yeah.
They're all sort of, okay. So now, these are the, the choice, well, what the customer was fond of it too. What do you think about Roy's talk about the boardman side? You know, do you think that is viable, or do you think, uh, he stands over this?
It, it won't be in his top two, is what I do.
Yeah, okay.
Probably not.
Thank you.
That, that, that's what I said. It wouldn't be in my top two.
I want to make sure I wasn't.
Yeah, but that's just, that's just.
I would go with that too, Jeff. Would you go with that?
I wouldn't, but, but um, it's a democracy here, and the majority rules, so.
So we got two.
So that, so we've narrowed down to two sites, then the fairgrounds and the southeast.
Okay. Do you want, you feel that you have all the information to make the decision today?
No.
You want, uh, you want to delay it and get some more information?
Well, I would, I mean, are we gonna still do a geo certain, right?
No, that's a built in.
Okay.
That's a built in.
And so what I don't want to do is get us to where we say, okay, we're going to do the southeast site, and then after we do it, well, oh my gosh, we blew that, right? Um, so I definitely want to keep the, the other option in there.
Yeah.
It's, it's my preferred site. The, the fairground site is, I'll say, that's, that's my preferred site.
Fairground.
Fairgrounds, yes, yes.
Yeah, no, it uh, the, the mill site southeast would be contingent on uh, we could, right, make that happen? We're not gonna, we're not gonna, I mean, other than time investment, which is money to us, to the people of Morro County. It's costing.
Yeah.
More time would take.
Yeah.
That, that's gonna be what we invest in. Uh, explore the southeast site, right? I mean, we're not going to take ownership, we're not going to do any other, they're not gonna go in and do a bunch of design work specific to that site, anything like that, right?
So, um, our, our design team, I had, I had reached out to them, and they are ready to unleash the geotech as soon as we have direction from VOC. And with this, uh, we've also gotten approval from Port of Morro to uh, verbally, you just need to get something in writing, just to say our, uh, our geotech can go out there and, and start to get fixed. They, Port of Morro says we can do that all the time, they have no hesitation in, in having us proceed that.
Okay, so it's a geotech, no other, no other work done at that site, first, geotech first?
Yes.
See what happens, no other investment.
And it, it's similar to what we did here. We, we've already done the geotech there.
Yeah, just want to make sure we're all clear, that we're not, well, you know, we're out there doing this map, and because it's I mean, if, to talk, unknowns, how do you, how do you listen and unknown, or, or, you know, something that you don't know, wait, you're trying to keep your expenses down until you know what that unknown is. You wait till you know for sure, and you don't spend a bunch of money um, without getting that nailed down first.
Yeah, so do we have a path for the water in the sewer if we put in sewer? I mean, and I'm guessing we'd probably opt not to put in sewer, but for one to the site, we have a, we have a path, we have an easement.
Yes, easement.
Easement along the, of the old railroad uh, path, uh, which already has an irrigation uh, pipeline through there, uh, so that is usable, um, so we wouldn't have to look at any property acquisition or anything to get it right there. And that easement goes right to the south side of the area that we're looking to develop in on the southeast parcel. So just, I want to make it up here, actually, and you have a comment on.
No, no, I want to make sure, right, I just remembered that whole, this goes back to the years about remembering when that first utility got in, going back to the railroad that either the county had and the utilities there. So, I do remember and agree that there is that utilities ordered in place right now. I remember that came up, it's once that first utility got put in, that is what set the location of the easiness, kind of floating one first after that first utility got put in. So we do have that, so I don't have an issue with that, it may actually be fine.
So in your opinion, you're legal expected. So, in your opinion, you're legal expected using that easement for the.
Yeah, but that is still more of a utility, go, go, yes, on easement.
Did you wanna make any comment, or send any questions?
Um.
Ever city manager?
It, it looks like it's a fairly straight line, it, our, our water runs to Oregon Road, and it's twelve inch line, it's fairly straight line, along the forever easement to the mill site property. Um, and then just the sighting of where a courthouse would be located on total distance, but, um, I think it's probably closer to a mile and not a mile and a half. But we have the capability of extending up to twelve inch water line. And that's, I know, I think it was two weeks ago at the court meeting, they were having some kind of discussions about water lines and, and size and necessity, and I said, well, twelve inches is the largest that we have anywhere in town, so we can't follow up to a fourteen or sixteen inch line, because you're not gonna get any more volume through it, it's being fed by twelve, but we give out the ability of up to twelve inch maximum.
Eight inch would be the minimum size that we go with, um, if the board wanted to increase that, we will be asking them to, to help cover the cost of the increased sizes pipeline. Uh, because that would be for any future development series.
In, increased pressure would, would be an issue, we do have high pressure at the end of the line, so there'd probably be a, a pressure relief valve at least one in line going down the elevation loss between Oregon Road and the site. But it's not low pressure, so, I mean, that's, that's good in, in that aspect, we're not trying to run it uphill, so there's no lot of pressure you've got. So, there would be plenty of pressure for charging on fire hydrant and, uh, water needed for facilities.
Is there more information that you think, even when you think about this?
Outside of the geotech?
What?
Outside of the geotech.
Outside, yeah, that's a good, uh, I think we covered that already, the geotech, it's standalone, no other expenses. It, uh, it's a deal breaker, if we did, if we go that route, up the hill. You know, or, well, I'm not, I shouldn't say, it's contingent, heavily contingent on what's down, but I shouldn't prejudge anything.
So your question about any other reservations on picking two sites or narrating the ones?
I think we've gone down to two.
Okay, right.
No, no.
So I'm just asking, so will you clarify your, any other resolution, any other, uh, reservations?
Any other, uh, well, either, either, either if you wanna talk about the site some more before we vote on them, or if you sit here and if you tell me, well, I want some more information for the site, I wanna delay my decision, that's a possibility. Uh, any more questions about, uh, the process, I guess that's what it would be, the three things, the process, information on, uh, costs of the actual site, you know, and then, um, probably go there and say.
So if the geotech comes back clean and the site is okay, the water system would be put in at the same time as all the other destruction that's going on. So, um, in talking with the board, their availability over the first, uh, for the rest of the year in first part of winter is not good. Uh, late winter, early spring of next year is when they can do their in-kind work. Uh, the monetary, uh, contribution by the city of Hepner is slated for their, uh, fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And so if we were to do the work before July first, twenty twenty five, um, the county would have to front that cost uh, until their, their budget year started, and we, we could reimburse on that. Um, so there is a little bit of, uh, uh, finessing on those and just availabilities, the funds that may have been made available. Uh, but I think it's not, uh, unworthable, so. And then my question to John is what, what projects in the city of Hepner are gonna be put off in order to allow, if there's still students? We have to put something off.
Um, it would be looking at preserve fund for future capital. Um, I said in the, the city county court meeting that we had two weeks ago, I said, our next ten years' projects right now between water and wastewater are roughly twenty six million dollars. But doesn't take into account any street rebuilds. Um, within the city, we've got two streets that are in pretty bad state of disrepair right now. Um, and then a cheap chip ceiling, so, um, eight hundred thousand dollars is, for this year, our budget is over nine million dollars, that's the largest budget we've ever had. It's usually in the six to seven million over the previous few years. So taking away eight hundred thousand dollars, be like saying if we take our, um, possible press funding and, you know, press funding, we're looking at putting in reserves for future water systems, which we're gonna be looking at on the reservoir and, well, hopefully in calendar year twenty twenty six, or provide security and redundancy for the city. And then, um, our stage one of wastewater upgrades involve, um, repair and rebuild of our wastewater plants, possible, um, installation of an ammonia elimination system, so that could put, possibly put them off, um, as far as, as what timeframe? Or it could just increase the amount of, um, debt that we have to assume. And, and, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're not a large municipality, and, and our, our population growth has been stagnant for the most part over the past few years, so, um, eight hundred thousand dollars is, it's significant for it.
And, and then the water usage, it goes in, is that gonna affect, I mean, you're okay on that.
The water, the water usage right now, it's not an issue, our, our main supply wells are both one and two, which are eleven and fourteen miles of, go across from the city, so we're not had a water shortage. But the, the additional reservoir and wells for security and redundancy, um, and then, you know, hopefully planning for, for future growth, but all of our water for the most part comes down well across two bridges before it has the city's distribution system, so we're looking at water security and redundancy of citing a new well and reservoir, if something were to happen to our supplies. Um, you know, hasn't happened in the past, but, but it would be a, an emergency if that did happen, so we're looking at the future for our security of the city, but as far as volume, um, we're, we're not short water right now.
What do you wanna do, Dave, now that we were asking questions about them geotech, or you want to move, add the geotech or?
I do.
For that mill site?
But I, I don't know, I'm so, it's democracy, but I, I wanna move a geotech on the mill site.
Yeah, it's, it's the only way to answer an unknown.
Huh?
It's the only way to answer the unknown. Well, it's, um, I have my, we're always having geotech, and I'm gonna say, and then motion. Any motion or consensus?
I would like a motion.
Okay. Motion, make it official on the record, so.
Matt, the attorney, could, correct me if I'm not, if I'm.
You can have a preference, it's fine.
I don't think it has to be.
Well, I'm moving to start staff, move forward to geotech, I'll study out the southeast mill site, so we're certain we're filming, I'll second.
We can second any previous discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'll shoot that direction out to our design team right immediately.
I'm just starting to set it up, please, can I do that?
I told him to be ready to start tomorrow, so, uh.
Okay, next up, we now have seven, yeah. Resolution R dash twenty twenty four, a non-discrimination, discrimination complaint procedure, but it's a good. For HR department head.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, so what you have in front of you is a resolution, um, establishing a moral, kind of non-discrimination complaint, the plan and procedure. Uh, this was stemmed for, from compliance with our state and federal funding. Uh, we need it for a lot of the grants that we are applying for or are receiving. Um, while it does stem from grant compliance, uh, it's always good to formalize a process and procedure for, um, complaints and, um, an action plan for a limited English access or, uh, discriminations or, um, accommodated, uh, disability accommodation. So what you have before you is, um, a non-discrimination of this that we would post, um, and have it accessible to the public, so on our website, um, and, uh, on our internet. And then we have a complaint procedure, a formalized complaint procedure. Um, the actual complaint form. And, uh, then in addition to that, we have a language access plan. And so, um, as part of this language access plan, we have to identify some goals and some actions that the county will take um, in order to make sure that, um, access to, you know, limited English, um, speaking, uh, citizens are, is accessible, so, um, on the four bullet points at the bottom of the plan says that we will use strategies to address language services, um, and those include, uh, continue to make the hiring of English, Spanish bilingual employees in public facing departments of priority. Um, expand the use of on-demand translation services, written or verbal, which we have, um, started to do with our translation with the Zoom, and, um, we do use interpretation services with, uh, what's it been called? Hmm. Pulling it on it. Anyways.
I've entered.
Yeah, uh, we have several departments that use a, um, interpretive service that is on demand. And then, um, more intentional examination of printed materials, so providing those in dual languages or translation. Um, and then, you know, continue to partner with external or state agencies in order to improve these resources. So, like, for example, we have our public health department that partners with O H A, um, and the other nearby counties, uh, to provide a translator for, um, uh, public health, uh, materials to get those out to the public. So, yeah, uh, while, like I said, while this does stem from a need, um, for grant compliance, um, it was also needed just in general to formalize, uh, standard procedures and processes in regards to this.
Well, why is everybody else?
Yeah. And we did try to make it, um, general so that it would apply to several different, um, funding sources. Because, you know, federal has their own, state has their own, so we tried to make it, um, broad to cover all the, the bases. You have any questions on this?
I'm gonna take a motion to adopt.
I'll move for a resumption, R dash two zero two four, Dan, say.
Who's in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion very. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, seven C, organizations are supposed to request the proposals to traffic engineer of record, and.
Thank you. Um, for the record, channel, I'm the planning director. So, uh, this item, um, I submitted it, but it's, uh, really, um, the need for a traffic engineer to be a second set of eyes on other traffic impact analysis is really a request of public works and planning. And I'm not, I'm just sure where Kevin wants all the funding for that to come from, both Eric and I have, um, contractual funds in our respective budgets. So, the, this traffic engineer, at least for the planning department, would primarily be a peer review of other traffic engineer reports uh, that we see coming in, we've had two in the last few months, and we expect fortified more. And our engineer of record, Anderson, apparently does not have a traffic engineer on staff, so we've checked with them first. And we went through, uh, the less formal procurement effort using two different firms for the two that we retained in the last couple of months, but we'd like to have one of records, so it's easy, um, for us to just call on them. Um, and for those of you who've served on the planning commission, you can appreciate that from time to time. Um, a developer's traffic engineer comes up with recommendations that might be quite different than what, um, the underlying jurisdiction and the public works office comes up with, so it's another set of eyes independent third party to say the analysis was properly calculated or not properly calculated, and here's a set of mitigation for whatever the development is. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I have to admit, you know, after, again, I've served many years on the planning mission, and in the past, and I know times change and everything, but we always kind of took the traffic impact analysis because it was done by an engineer, and the face value is what the analysis is. I guess my perception would be is that if it's an engineer stamping its validity, they have professional standards they have to meet. So I was kind of wondering why going down this route to second guessing everything that comes to force that's presented by a professional, that's putting a stamp on it, who's better finding the validity of it. And no offense, Justin, but you can have them turn, and that's ten attorneys can get ten different things you'll obtain, so. And so I did reach out to Eric yesterday, and I said, you know, because it mentioned public works, and I said, so you seem like a big name, he says, well, in the six years this, we've needed to consult once with somebody, you know, since sixteen years. I was questioning why we were spending twenty thousand bucks.
Well, that's one of my questions too, is, is there an incident that triggered this?
Yes, well.
One, one one?
Yes. And we've been working closely with their companies, um. I really can't, um, share specific details because we don't want to be discussing a pending application outside of the normal public review process. Um, one that Daisy and I just read, um, and reviewed together Monday, um, a second set of eyes said, look, um, it doesn't meet your traffic impact analysis standards because the data is more than three years old, and those are standards that are in our adopted code and in our adopted transportation system plan. So, um, when you have another set of eyes that look at that, um, it throws off all of the, the rest of the standards. We've been working closely with O D A, because we have a couple of large projects that directly affect an O D A facility. Um, and the mitigation that Eric comes up with has been questioned, uh, because he's not a licensed engineer, but has very good boots-on-the-ground practical knowledge. So this also helps him defend what he can, what he can come up with. Um, and then two engineers would come up, may come up with very different mitigation standards, so we're talking about traffic that might be between four hundred and twelve hundred trips per day, and by any measure, that's gonna create impacts to either a county or a state facility, so again, we can have another engineer in the room. If, um, our engineer takes a quick look at it, says it's acceptable, the assumptions, the calculations, and the mitigation are appropriate, we can go with that, if not, then we can have engineer to engineer come up with, um, some reasonable, um, solution.
Um, Commissioner, if I can just chime in on it, um, I'm, I'm always an advocate to have a, a checkpoint, uh, that's, that's looking out on the government side on, on these things. While that does create a little bit of layer of redundancy, and in, in working with developers, uh, their, their design team is going to be looking out after their interests. Um, and this, uh, this transportation, uh, contractor for the county would be tasked with looking out at the overall interests of the county. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the cases in point on this is, uh, a major intersection, and they're, they're using outdated, uh, traffic, uh, statistics. And also saying, we wanna make improvements, we'll do this.
And also saying, we want to make improvements, we'll do this, is this sufficient? And of course, their engineers saying it is sufficient, but if we look at it beyond their project, there are there are other impacts. I'd also put this similarly to why we have building inspectors and and building uh. Uh, you know, building plan reviews, while those are all stamped by an architect who are certified in that. We have a building official who looks over all those plans to make sure that it fits within the codes and requirements of of the city and the county. And a layer of redundancy. And uh, and a lot of times, everything's good, but there's, I would say, there's not a, there's not a single. Building plan that goes through that doesn't have at least one correction or hey, why did you do this and and verification on things? Uh, this isn't a major contract, uh, but it is a safeguard on on some of these items. And um, just, I mean, case in point, where as we look at more development on Tower Road. There's intersections that we need to look at holistically from the whole county's viewpoint instead of just one development and to double check the trans. Transit analysis is um for, instead of just from one building to the whole road that might be impacted. Is is there, I believe there's value in it for for us to avoid um future issues. But it is, it is definitely a layer of redundancy to acknowledge it.
Now, I think if I'm missing something here, is this a? Is this a retainer plus? Performance type of deal?
Right now, this is an RFP, we can go out to it.
Did I miss anything? The schedule not in here?
We we don't have, it's just the RFP, um.
It's what?
It's a request for proposal and then the the contract would, depending on the amount of the contract, would come back to either the board or to Matt personally.
Right, it just, I was just reading, you know, what's it, it says, um.
Phone out the base state.
No, 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 not the, not the letting of the contract, but. The, you know, the work that the person would do once hired. Um. Is it, is it a retainer plus? Plus work that they do, or how does that work? Because they're on call, so.
I'm not familiar with on call service that has a base retainer, but. There there could be one out there, it just means when we call them to do work. They'll do work at a pre-approved uh schedule of fees and then do that work.
Okay, so if we never call them, they never bill us?
Correct. And that's what we do with our, that's, that's the intent, that's what we do with our granting services and.
That's what I wanted to show, whether they allow to call us to.
What?
Our labor council.
And our labor council, that's what I said, labor council as well.
You have more questions, Cheryl? Hold that.
And we don't anticipate this contracting a huge, huge item, but it does. A lot, it it is beyond the scope of our um. Engineer record, um, they're great civil service, civil engineer type things, but we're looking at. At transportation planning, so we're looking for specialists that can and and tackle those items.
Well, how long is it for?
Four years.
Four years? So we wouldn't be able to revisit it for, for how many four years? Correct?
Um, you, yes, we could revisit it, I mean, it's not. Ongoing and we could review and see if it's been of value, if we've used it and give a report on those and of course.
On yearly basis.
Um, we can always review contracts uh at at service, I mean.
Right, I was just trying to, Jeff's question was, you know, this is something new we're adding and it's. You know, we haven't used it before. Is this something we would review after a year and say? Well, we could, that would kind of fit in with my retainer question was.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely have it as a review from planning department saying, hey, we've used them this much, here's, here's what we've used. Uh, it'd be very easy to quantify uh as part of a budget or a financial statement of saying. Here's how much we've spent on this contract each year.
On a yearly basis.
Yeah, especially since it's a new thing, I think planning could agree to have him to put that as an annual review.
And Chair, if I might, uh, we can build in a cancellation clause, so um. After a year, we decide we need a director, two years, I just put four years out there because. Um, the type of development we're expecting in the next four to eight years, there's several of them that will require us, rather than going back and doing another RFP, but. I'm sure with council support, we can build in a one or two year escape clause, cancellation.
Yeah, we might work on that too, we have just checked out the RFP language, we haven't. We had it drafted, but we haven't put it out there yet, so I'll just double check that first. We're looking up to four years and then maybe language saying it's a year to year up to four years um. Automatic renewal unless there's a cancellation every year, you know, so we can talk about some.
Um, Justin, what if that up to four years, that just freezes the rates in place?
Well, also so we don't have to go back out sometimes, right? So if we say, hey, it depends, it depends on the prices, pretty low, so it's a little bit different anyway than how we do it. But if I thought about other larger ones in the past, say, hey, we're going to do services. They caught, I think my, I think my public works, the asphalt, things like that, and you say, hey, this is for um. Up to four years, something else about that time, the bids we get back, um. We can contract with it, the issue is, let's say we did, oh, we wanted to do a one year. Well, then theoretically, you have to go back out to RFP, unless we say in there that it's going to be extended, it can be extended.
I've seen this before, well, on agreements, a lot of times in contracts versus renewable. Cancelled by any party at any time, you know, uh, or, you know, with sixty days notice, and I think, well, what is the renewable actually meaning? You know, if you can cancel, w- well, why do you put that in there?
I mean, first you have a set deadline, so if I'm going, I'm responding back to a book or about the proposal, I look at this and I'm thinking, hey, it's only for. One year that I had in my mind, saying only for one year that this is going to go on for, if I say up to four years. And I'm told, hey, it's going to be, can't, it can either be, if everything's going good, we're going to be up to four years, and I know I won't have to go back out to RFP. For four years, but it's still be cancelled anytime. Uh, by either party with six day notice. That at least aware of what's going on, and I know I'm up to four years, if I say the RFP that we're looking for a one year contract. The issue is, if I have that language in there, then that's all it should be, because someone who responded back to it saying, well, gosh, I know this. RFP was going to be going for uh ten years, if we can keep on being renewed. I might respond to it, I just didn't want to respond to an RFP that was only going to be good one year.
Who's the, you know, the longer you said you had four years, who's that an advantage for? The service provider or your? Or the us?
Usually, I would say, I've seen it as benefit for us, I've seen more of the issues in the past of like. All of a sudden, public works, I think about public, I think about the past, but I think about some of these top mix ones where it's been like. Oh, gosh, you guys have been great, we wanted to renew that contract, oh, well, the the original ones are, it was only for two years. Be irregular, we need to go back out here. If we have it up to a certain long extent, that means if it's working well for us, we can keep on doing it without having to go back out to an RFP. I can see the the business, normally the business may not like it, even ties them into a. Value of a cost amount, they don't like that unless it changes, you have flexibility in the Congress to allow for that, I would say the benefit. If the language is two parts, if it is can be cancelled by either party for a certain notice. And up to four years, then it's, I would say, a benefit to the county. Um, if there's an issue where we definitely need the services. And it puts us in a bind if they cancel, that's a problem, we haven't had that happen, it really has. Everything I've seen so far has been benefit to the county. Kevin, I know you've dealt with a lot of the contracts, you you deal with stuff too, that, how you look at it too, or is it just?
Yeah, definitely, the benefit is primarily with the county and. Um, you know, the statutory limitations on the ability to extend or amend contracts down certain. A dollar amount, but the original price of the contract, so it's definitely going to be. In our interest to contact for a longer duration and a shorter duration just because of the resources that are required for the RFP process.
Once it is time, it's a new process, go do it all again.
You have other questions?
Someone has read into the RFP about the insurance requirements. Thing that uh my attention was, what's the employer's liability insurance, a million dollars disease each employee? What is that?
Sure.
Page sixteen of the packet or twelve, fourteen, you can get a RFP.
You know, that's actually uh language I'm not really familiar with as well, but uh. Probably has been added into some base agreements ever since COVID and such, um, but I, I am one of the two, yes. We pulled out.
This is a good question, we just um cut and paste it from our other inputs that we've been using for RFP, so I assume that was a legal requirement. But for example, GSI Water Solutions shows us, you know, their insurance policy handling, is that a pretty industry statement?
That would require.
Like a million dollar liability.
I didn't really want. Disease policy.
Yeah, that's, I can't remember.
Disease each employee, now these policy, nine forms, under liability.
Yeah, I mean, I'm right, in my mind, maybe I'm wrong, I'll look, go through and see. That would need to be reviewed, I I think, I'm I'm more used to the, like, RFP accident or incident, I'm not sure, that one, the disease aspect, I don't call it much, so. Probably unless I can find a basis, otherwise, I'm more used to that each incident calls, which I'm not. That's the term I'm more used to and probably will change it to that. So we're okay with RFP, all of this, we still may have edited, we review that section, I'm not so sure. Let me find a basis of why. I'm not so sure about the disease.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's. So we'll probably change that one, edit out, I'll probably reach out and tell them to show us the one where we used it before, just to learn what it's from, you know. I mean, I think.
I'm not even seeing where that is.
Uh, do you have the packet?
I do.
Page sixty eight?
Yes, which.
Um, boy, employers liability insurance. Remembered one down, there is a bit.
Um. Excellent. I said. Uh.
Yeah.
Um, I am, I see, yeah, we just um. Cut and paste it from other RFPs that we, the boards approved in a year and a half or so.
At least a million dollar policy.
Yeah, so we can change that part out, I can begin that anyways. Listen, I don't know, do you mind?
Yeah, I think you're considering improving this. To. We just. I'll talk.
Well, I I'd be okay, I mean, hearing the justification from the ministry and from the department head, you know, I don't. You know, not going to micromanage and, you know, what they're doing, they have the justifications. So I'm fine with going forward with the um RFP and then we'll look up the language, I think that we approved. The language of RFP, just the idea of sending out a nice thing as well.
Okay, my name is great, okay.
And you will look into the RFP?
Yes.
That's relatively the.
Uh, for, yeah.
Questions? 搖搖枝的 motion?
So I need to authorize to post a request for proposals for traffic engineer of record. So.
Should move to second or further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Right?
Aye, is it?
Oh, I didn't hear, I mean. Motion carried. Thanks, Kevin. Okay. Yeah, next up is uh. What?
It's Karen.
Yeah, Karen, so, you'll go away. Sunday, and then GSI Water Solutions, contract for water coordinator services, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Chair for the record, Chairman Mabbe, Planning Director. This is a request to um amend the GSI Water Solutions in contract. For water coordinator services, and this is the group that's working on. Uh, with the Water Advisory Committee. And um this primarily, not entirely, but primarily is building back funds that they um. Spent, we spent with them last year. Um, putting together an SEP proposal, um, which we did not prevail on, we hope we do this year. Um, and also um putting together the technical aspects of the drinking water investigation, otherwise known as the EPA grant. Um, and then building in a little bit more um uh to build in the new SEP application that um Matt mentioned earlier in this report. Or Kevin um has uh recently submitted to be reimbursed, so this build back amount, most but minus the thirty two hundred. Will be reimbursement from U K. Most of it will be?
Good. And by.
Oh, okay.
I do.
He did look at it.
Okay, your question? Do you have any questions, you, Joe? You know? Okay, I'm going to change motion to.
Move to for contract amendment with GSI for water coordinating services. Say.
Move to second then. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carried, thank you. You're still up.
Still up.
Don't get far ahead. Okay, that is a wagon trail solar draft proposed, Jordan?
So I will excuse myself, but next to her, those have been James and Michael, director, and I'm on the board director, six of them, director.
Okay, uh, thank you, um, so the letter in front of you is um likely the last that the county would weigh in on the wagon trail solar project. Um, Daisy and I, Daisy did the heavy lifting on this and reviewing it, as you know. On the, the local governing body is asked to provide comments throughout the energy facility citing council process. Both as the governing body and also as the um. Uh, local. Special advisory group, S A G, that was the county was appointed um many years ago. Uh, we finalized the letter after attending the Energy Facility Sitting Council hearing in Boardman last Thursday evening. Um, the letter in summary indicates the county is very supportive of the project, but this is um the second project that. Has proposed some sort of mitigation to to demonstrate in part. They've complied with the goal three exception criteria. Since that hearing, there's some additional information that that we've learned, and Ryan Hill was here today to explain that. Um, the letter was written um again in support of the project, but asked the sitting council. Um, to take a little bit closer look. Most of our comments are agreeing with the findings of the sitting council, but have asked um. Um. For the applicant, again, to justify why farm ground's being taken out of production, there's a process for doing that, it's called the goal three exception. And um as Ryan Hill mentioned earlier, part of their methodology. To mitigate was to show that they're buying local and using local companies, and they've um also included some other mitigation as well. Um, compared to a mitigation project that you formalized a few months ago. This was um a little bit more ad hoc. And um we very much appreciate the process that they went through, but we'd like to formalize it um. Together by working with the developer and S X staff.
What's a deadline for now with this? Oh, let me give you the reason I asked.
Sure.
I I kind of realized now, I mean, Ryan said he had to go somewhere, is that why he came in at the comment section? Because this has been appropriate, right? Well.
Um, I indicated he could, uh, when he asked me that he could provide comments during public comments and during this, so.
Oh, okay, okay, so he's here now.
Um, he might, maybe he is there, yes.
Want to. I just, staying with the spirit of our comments. We don't usually go have a back and forth, and if the commissioners have questions of him. You know, this, this is where it's done in the uh. In the actual business portion.
Yes, yes. So um, the, I can answer questions about the letter, um Daisy's also listening in, um she can answer questions. Or the county doesn't have to approve the letter, we don't send the letter, but. Um, based on a very brief conversation I have with you, Chair Sykes, uh, last week. Uh, the trend, particularly where we are on the cusp of, um, there's twenty six thousand acres. Of solar being proposed on farm ground in Moro County, actually, I take that back, because one part is in the airport light industrial zone. And um so mitigation. And um so mitigation. Is um, I think we set the precedent with mitigation with the Sunstone project. And um, next era was a little bit later to the process to acknowledge that mitigation was appropriate. And then came in and did that and had some great conversations and some nice projects. Uh, we would just like, um, the letter would make that a little bit more of a formal process.
I I don't remember Sunstones, I mean, I remember reading their proposal, but I don't know that it ever came out in a public meeting. The amount for their mitigation and how it was gonna be available, don't think we ever did that, I don't, I don't want to talk about it unless it's.
Correct. Um, I think the MOA we have with them has a not to exceed amount of just shy of eleven million dollars.
Doesn't, okay, that's all I need to hear.
Which is, um, excuse me, but it's proportionate, so that's a much larger project. But even the per acre calculation um is considerably more than this project.
I understood, that's why I did a little figuring. And, you know, and saw. What, if you went by the acreage, how much um? This project. Would, if they're comparable, Sunstone would pay a mitigation. The acres aren't the same, I don't know, I didn't deep dive it that much, if you went by um megawatts. You know, one's, one's quite a bit bigger, more double than the other one. You know, I mean, Sunstone's a ten thousand dollars a megawatt.
Is that what the formula um?
Well, that's my figures. And wagon trails. Well, I don't, I'm not trying to, I know he, he said that his, his mitigation included other factors. You know, that he, the company felt were should be in there, well, I guess that's just, you should discuss. You know, Sunstone is, what? Thousand one hundred and sixty five dollars an acre in their mitigation.
I see.
Nine thousand four hundred and forty two acres.
I I didn't um back it.
That's what I can.
Okay.
So, under that theory, you know, I mean, wagon trails seven thousand four hundred and fifty acres. Sunstone's at ten thousand dollars an acre, so. I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure on. I guess, I haven't got a complete picture on what their mitigation plan actually is.
Um.
I know not Sunstone, I know Sunstone, but we've had a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
Widen trails actually, but he isn't what they.
Yeah, so so wagon trail um. Again, uh, didn't involve county in that discussion. That doesn't mean, um, that's not good mitigation, but I think.
Thousand dollars to.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm in this enough, but he he mentioned, I think the reporter, him, mentioned there were other factors that they were including as. As their mitigation is, well, that other one, there you have, there you have.
So, that's, that's right, and I think those factors were similar, so I, I don't know that we can do a like for like person. Um, so I really relied on really the more process, which with Pen Gate was more. Formalized, because remember, um, this is about taking exception to goal three in Moro County. So if the county isn't, doesn't acknowledge that, um, and agree to that, that means we defer that decision to the state agency. And with Pen Gate, they were upfront in that mitigation piece. And and um included the county.
And, you know, the only reason I I did these three is I understand that they're not exactly. But if you are gonna bring up Sunstone while you're talking about the other one. Uh, what would be the purpose of doing that unless you are gonna kind of compare them, you know, you know, you know, they're kind of a guiding. Okay, this is how this was done, and we, and we talked to. Wagon Trail, I I I don't know if that's what it was about, what it was about, I don't know. Did you? You know, I read through the letters of the previous commission though. Did you summarize what the county position was, but there was three letters in there, right?
Uh, yes, I think a little long, um, let's see.
They didn't suggest throughout the, but there are few ones on the.
Oh, I I think so, we've been supportive of it, we um had some pretty firm language about weed medication. And I think what we saw in the draft proposed order is um. It's not hundred percent, but it's pretty close, so they'll provide some weed medication. Um, that will be the funding, so that will route through FSEC through the state. Um, the, the trend that we were thinking about relying on is to have some of that more upfront. Let's see, I don't, I didn't make copies of those other letters. Um, I could look it up here. Uh, this isn't a departure, this really is just a little bit more detailed than what.
That's kind of one more question.
Okay, thank you.
From the previous administration. Yeah, we just literally.
Yes.
Okay. It's not as.
Okay, thank you.
No, question yourself. I'm gonna take a motion to. Go through the letter.
It's a comment letter, not support letter. How much, like I said, Jeff, how much weight is the letter hold with that set? Gold exceptions.
Well.
I mean, that's what we're talking about is the goal three exception is the issue that the county sits on.
Well, their staff didn't accept the goal three exception either, so I think they were looking to say, wait, that's our staff interpreted it, just like. I'm interpreted the same, but that's, that's what we're saying is, um, I think they could, that we do agree with them, yes. Um, the deadline is McCombs Chair is Friday, so the turnaround time on some of these. Are the really large document is pretty short.
Well, I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve wagon trails over DPO comment.
Bad luck if I don't, okay?
Okay.
It's bad, I get that. Okay, I'll say that. All in favor?
Aye.
All votes motion carried, okay, thank you.
If it's not, we can just have you leave it. It's not required, I know, it's, it's gonna have to get a little um partitioned while. Don't ask Jeff, Dave.
Okay, I'm gonna call a question. Worked my down to opposition, something about an environmental project application.
Um, thank you, Commission. Uh, what we're looking at right now is supplemental environmental project application. Which is uh related to the uh Oregon Department of Environmental Quality fines against the Port of Moro for nitrate. Um, uh, nitrate issues with that, as they, as the port continues to work on their um. Their treatment center, they are uh still being fined, uh held responsible, make sure they keep going along. Uh, the April uh fines were in the amount of seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, their anticipation and. Correct me if I'm um junior, if you might know, is uh kind of fall twenty twenty five to have that treatment center. All in place, and just with an extension.
Yes, yes.
And so um they do anticipate um possibly another round of uh fines next year. Um, the previous one with the SEP, there is an opportunity for local governments to be. Kind of the fiscal recipients of the monies in more, if there is a project. That will help mitigate nitrate issues in the area. Um, the previous fine was much higher and ended up just going to OHA, which uses it for water distribution. Um, it's uh the port reached out to DEQ and OHA and asked if they're, they're. We might be able to keep it local and apply it to some actual project deliveries. And uh so they approached uh staff about doing that, and um. We anticipate that of the seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars would be available to affect projects. Um, the anticipation that we did was targeting Westland uh community, it's the low hanging fruit, it's something that we could. Uh, do fairly quickly and and join in with the Business Oregon Technical Support Grants that we're looking at. Um, so because of the size of this grant and the uh. Public uh exposure that this issue has, we wanted to make sure that we brought this before the commission. Uh, before he, before applying for it and make sure uh that um you're aware, acceptable of um this application. And agreeable for the scope of work that's going on. This, the proposed scope would be to pay for the, almost the full engineering of the project. Uh, uh for Westland uh nitrate water solutions, doesn't include the sewer side things, this would be the water. Uh, we anticipate the two Business Oregon Technical Support Grants would give us a. A big picture view at both water and sewer solutions, and that this would be more or less. Get, get something bid ready if, if we can identify the uh the solution. Uh, and with this one, it's creating some kind of uh connection to the municipal system or creating its own community system. Um, for water treatment and delivery. Um, so as we go through this, we just wanted to bring this before the commission, have any discussion, questions there. And ask for uh for approval by the commission for us to uh submit the. Supplemental environmental project based on the scope of work that's, that's attached with the cover letter. And we do have just as part of that motion, just to formalize uh the authorization to apply for the Business Oregon Technical Assistant Grants. In the amount of twenty thousand dollars each for water and sewer uh in the westmen area. Again, this is a part of county taking leadership, uh very uh. Minimal amounts of uh county money are going to this, we're utilizing state uh state funds and the fines from. Port of Moro to try to affect solutions in this area and address some serious nitrate issues in this community. So that I just open that up, questions or any comments from, from the commission.
And just to be clear, there are other grants out there that are available for wastewater systems as well, and they're, they're watered by committee last year.
Yes, there, there are several, and that, that's one of the things is. Um, even with the uh, the Business Oregon Technical uh grants, we were anticipating getting something. In place so we could apply for additional ones, whether that's CDS money, um actual DEQ EPA grants. Uh, uh state ones, so as we go to a full engineering solution, um after, and this does include. Uh, community meetings to engage with that, and so with William and Partnerships, uh possibly. Being able to take that and provide that without a cost to the, to the county um. Or cost to the SEP, then we can reroute some of that money to additional engineering or outreach as, as necessary. Um, our, our big goal on this is again, um, to try to uh. Maximize the connections and uh the different groups who have a very vested interest in, in addressing this nitrate issue. And to alleviate any kind of impact on county general funds. And also to reduce what the uh residents will be impacted on. Uh, we do anticipate some skin in the game by the residents, but we want to try to make that as, as low as possible because. Uh, we believe that there aren't funds available for this project.
And we've already done one SEP uh application, and we had to go to QUAP on that, we had to do a separate QUAP on this, we want them. Now, we can use the same. Or definitely doesn't qualify.
There's, I'm, I'm not aware of any QTP that's required for. Not to speak in acronym terms. I mean, that was required of the EPA grant, that's right.
Oh.
But the second EPA grant, I'm not sure yet, but not for the SEP order.
Yeah, we did originally look doing an SEP for the initial fine. Uh, but there's a lot of transition going on um with uh, with everything, and that just didn't formalize. Um, so I might have missed a target there, but um I think with um the emphasis. Uh, the cautious emphasis that the commission is providing now, and um. And with the additional personnel that we have in place, I think we're better positioned to help uh help. Provide a leadership role for uh distribution, the SEP funds and, and these kind of solutions.
Yes, I have one question, I mean, and I like the way myself, I like the way this is going, I think this is the. Which I was playing, I think they're niche, I think it's what we do good. And um, they're under task two, it does talk about, there's a sewer and roads now. I'm assuming GSI. Has experience with roads, I guess, but anyway, what's your, what's your thoughts about. Going roads in there, what's, what, what's your thoughts on that one?
Um, this was kind of part of my, uh, my request, I mean, if we're going to do a local improvement district. Give the residents of West uh, Westland an option to, hey, if we want to get roads in there as well. This is a, this is a funding option to do it. Now, when you put roads in, um, there are um. USDA kind of um, um, grants, uh CBDG grants that might be available. A lot of times those are for restructuring failure roads, not new, new road installations. So this would be something where we go to the residents, say, here's an option, as we create this funding vessel of some kind. To give you roads, and so we just want, uh, the road aspect of this is fairly easy, as they measure out the pipes. They'll just measure out what the road i- instances are and give us some, some quotes based on road base and asphalt.
Yeah, that part I always, doesn't sound difficult, the ongoing maintenance is what I'm thinking of. You know, so, I don't know how long it takes to tear up a road, I guess it depends on how many. trucks you're going to roster, uh, you know. You know, I, if it, you know, if you get a one-time grant, fix the roads in my five years, I don't know.
Fifteen years if it's on maintenance side.
No, no, yeah, without a maintenance, so, maintenance has to be part of it.
Yeah.
If you're doing longer thinking.
Well, it goes even just not, perseverance to asphalt. Like you have to responsibility, who's found the snow in the winter, and all that other stuff. It's a won't become a county road.
No.
Yeah, and and my question, I guess, is. What's your thoughts when you say roads, does it include what you just said, is it, you know, ongoing maintenance, is it. Yearly maintenance or one-time shot or what?
So when you deal, uh, and this would be if, if there was a local improvement district like in place. It would also be in like a uh, a homeowners association where they're paying in a certain amount. And that covers any kind of maintenance of, of the roads.
Right.
And so that's what we would anticipate, again, these roads are not publicly set up, they're uh private. Private roads with uh with accessways for all the neighbors. Uh, we don't want to get into that kind of density of roads, and um, and so. You know, we're giving them an option to fund them if they want to, because it has been one of the complaints in that community. And so if we are performing LID, if that's the solution that we like to look at, we just want to be able to say. Here's what that impact would be for roads, and you'd have to figure in a maintenance.
And being in an urban road boundary, you would have to take into city specifications. And wreck, not necessarily.
And that, we kind of, it kind of circled back to my original question. Is this something that's GSI familiar with uh local improvement districts and how they're set up and what we'd have to do? Or is this something, we, because I mean, I think that's about to go, so, but is this, is that something? GSI would, would incorporate into their, their study here, or is that something we do separately?
Um, if, they're going to look into it, pull in for some expertise on that. I, I will tell you, we'll be uh, we'll be looking at ourselves as well, just to double check and make sure. I, I don't believe this is a driving expert, eh eh, expertise by GSI, but it is something. I mean, a lot of this is how much things will cost, and we take that, look at the LID, they'll give us some. Initial ones, but we're already having general counsel. initial ones, but we're already having general counsel do looks on what we would have to do to affect those and make sure we are of an understanding so it doesn't fall apart suddenly we're we're taking it over.
So you have the somebody either GSI or us would have that amount of, okay, it's going to increase your tact by this much to maintain your roads every year. You know, if you do a improvement district, whether it's tied up with the water sewer or not, that that might be a selling, if you want to call it a selling point.
Yeah, so I And and part of this is we're going to go, we're going to talk to them and see where their pain points are. Um if their pain points are water, sewer and roads, we're going to say this is what it is. If it's just water, then if it's agreeable, then that's that's all we do.
Yeah, you have to define the barriers.
Now, if you do look Uh if you do look at the map, it does extend past the um the canal. It uh it does go across the canal. We have to figure out how we do that. Uh but it does expand to the west of Westland um to um Paul Smith Road, Paul Smith Road. Just because that is part of the UGB. It's on there. We'd be putting a line down the area and it's actually a bit easier. In my experience, an easier solution than Westland in general.
I wasn't talking about a geographical then. I was talking about when you say, well, we're going to talk, who are the people that you would talk to? And uh all go and interview or talk to all the residents of Westland and Jegrão Valerio or there's no neighborhood group or anything like that. So when you ask them, what do you want? I was just wondering who them was.
Well, and that's that's the thing is with this, we would have to uh there's a couple clickers on if we if they were to go to some kind of community water system, whether that's uh a well of their own, treatment of their own, or hooking into Boardman. Uh with the LID, we would need to have at least a super majority of of the residents vote and agree to this. Uh whether that's through signatures or through an election, those are those are steps that they'd have to do. Um and so it would be a door-to-door action. Uh we are um we have talked with ORA and uh we've got to do some trust building there, uh but they have talked about, you know, um as we look at solutions, let's let's try to put bygones let bygones be bygones and work forward. Um they do have a an established network there, so they they do have a value on that. So we will be engaging with them as well to try to try to overcome some of the cultural and language barriers that
And they also all have also approached me, I don't know about you guys, a couple times about the roads. I mean, they keep assuming that the county needs to fix it and you tell them, oh, no, the private road, but so oh, and these are ORA people because they talk to people out there, of course. And then then but then they uh two different people from ORA approached me about that one of them was, you need to get the roads fixed. Give it a sum of the county. And I explained to them. And the other one was, what can I more of a question, what can we do about the results of it? And so see, this is uh this is the right track.
This would really come out and allow that that community to decide what direction you want to go and take responsibility in this.
So I guess my comment is, so it's glad to hear, you know, earlier when we were giving your update about Skidmore meeting early in July or later July, you're coming somewhere, having a meeting before we get too far down the road with this. When I was reading the proposal, the public outreach machine, it's coming way late into the process. And I think it's important to get the buy-in of the people that's going to be affecting what it is that they're going to be willing to do because there's no sense in designing a system if they aren't willing to sign up for.
Yeah, that's a lot of money to spend on that. And that's one thing we talked with the port is, uh you know, uh you know, do we need to pivot and how that impacts the SCP is interesting because we have to show a specific project. Uh if we have to pivot before, you know, after that meeting in July or a little bit later with some follow-up meetings, then we have to go back to the state and say, we need assistance, not quite the issue. Uh here's here's another solution. And also just relating to the community, we know you've dealt with this for thirty plus years. Um we're looking at a solution that will come in over the next two to three years with your assistance. And so setting setting some parameters for them to understand, we can't just make pipe appear magically overnight. It's got to be a little bit more, but let's actually talk what solutions are available. That's that's what we're hoping to have with those additional at public outreach meetings.
And with it will come a monthly bill for your water.
Yes.
You know, you have public outreach meetings and sometimes we allow those people and anti-people to show up. So whether you if you base your decision on that, on a public meeting with the people that show up. Um I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't you in some, if it takes a super majority at some point, you know, I'm not against holding the public meetings, you know, see what they say, but if you go, dude, I know I'm ten people go off, they're really angry and they don't want this this way. Is that, okay, shut the whole thing down. Or what if you just said, okay, you know, you know, here's here's a signature list, go find the property owners, all right, and give this a super sixty-five percent? Is that what it is again?
I I think so.
But um I think let's look at the road deal and try to see, okay, so they are, they want this. If sixty-five percent of these landlords signed up, that it to me, but how to get you to do the invoice. Put the rubber to the road. If they sign, then you got it. Rather than just going, holding up a meeting and have some certain people show up and base the decision on that because then, you know, I mean, you put your money where your mouth is when you sign on it. They really, if they don't, if sixty-five percent then sign it, won't won't agree to this uh the district, you don't, you don't for sure, but
There there's a there's there's several hurdles that we have to look and review on. Um and that's uh like you said, that's one of the one of the bills with this first uh meeting in July. I take a little uh a bit of heart um from the from the uh code enforcement meetings that uh the planning staff do. Uh they've had quite a turnout from that that community um on those issues. Now that impacts livelihoods and that, but um this community has also had a pretty good representation in some of the other water discussion meetings. And so while they might be in more of a, you know, the loud minority or whatnot, we want to engage them and we hope as we go through and hit some of the people who have been engaged and say, we're talking solutions, not just coming to test your well again, uh and we're hoping to see a good turnout.
I I agree. I just sometimes am wary of a meeting and you and you base your whole decision-making process on what people feel up and how loud and angry they are. You know, if they're designed to affect, I mean, that's my thought. And then then is that the right way to find out, you know, the which nearly the uh temperature on the day?
Yeah.
Or what that, like I said, if you if you go out with the actual petitions and send them out, you know, okay. And it comes back to sixty-five percent, then you know you got it. If it doesn't, then you know for sure that, you know, even people that won't show up at the town hall get to get to sign on or not sign on.
And that's that's one thing with the public outreach. There is uh there is a portion for that uh that, I mean, part of this uh scope would have uh have a third party go out and engage and try to get signatures for uh CDPG, which we need uh economic uh disclosures and and all this and that. And so other kind of things that we've already reached out. It's got a couple of those third parties to do that and say we're not quite sure, but please pencil us in for a schedule because it's six months out for them to consider things. And so that's one thing that towners been good at um pulling some resources and say um start thinking of us and keep us a slot for it. Because yeah, just have just basing it off a public meeting, you're going to get the loud angry voices.
Like I said, I'm not saying that the bad thing.
Oh, we need
Public meetings are good.
Yeah.
But is it the final deciding factor when you make a decision to move forward or what to do?
Yeah, so appreciate that.
Okay. You know, the suggested motion, oh, really much question. No, I don't have any questions.
Um just the the motion includes the um the um the also just a uh an authorization for the two Business Oregon Technical System Grants. I don't have those in here. We were pulling those from the SCP scope of work, but uh they won't be beyond what this scope of work is and a little more basic. Also, those are at a at an approval point that I could go ahead and authorize those. But since they're linked together, I wanted to allow the board of commissioners to vote on allowing us to proceed with that as well. So that's why that's in the suggested motion.
Yeah, I made a motion to authorize the county administrators some notification for the uh supplemental environmental project and the two Business Oregon Technical Assistant Grants to develop mitigation efforts for the Westland community and surrounding.
Thank you, Mr. Second and further discussion. Alan Fagan.
Hi.
All right, may I close? Mr. Terry. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next up is our city attorney request for oh, wait, I'm sorry, amended or amended.
So this one is um um we are uh asking for amendment to the interim um ambulance um contract. The initial um the initial contract was set up at an amount of three thousand nine hundred sixty dollars per day. Um how that was figured and um was that uh to staff the crew uh on the twenty-four seven basis was uh two thousand six hundred forty dollars per area per day. Um and the um original discussion that we had when we passed that was that they would be housed in Boardman uh overnight for the coverage at irrigate and because of that, Boardman was willing to waive the uh that kind of that charge for that extra ambulance crew to dispatch from Boardman. And so the amount for the irrigate coverage on that was one thousand three hundred twenty a day, which came out of three thousand ninety-six. Uh upon rollout and that, we did have uh uh public uh, you know, concerns about that. Uh the extra eight minutes to get there is a concern in in life safety and without the ability to um uh with the unwillingness of the irrigate uh fire department to allow us to house the ambulances in their in their site and lack of facilities in there, based on the uh the schedule that Boardman Fire was using. Uh we needed to secure a uh a temporary rental. Um the mayor Hattan was very firm on on doing this. I know I've heard from uh Commissioner Landholtz and Commissioner Sykes. Uh we had a tacit approval to to change this, but we hadn't changed the uh the agreement. And so we're asking for the amendment to increase it to the full coverage for irrigate which also includes a rental of the facility. We don't have a rental facility charge for Heffner because we were able to work it out. Uh Boardman was able to get a uh donation of the fifth will that's down at the fairgrounds. So there's minimum costs to the to the county uh to house those. Um again, this is an interim contract. It does run uh the costs are a little bit different as we flex to cover the the void that was made with the health district canceling ambulance services. We hope that as we go to a uh get the providers and in place July seventeenth, we get all this hammered out and taken care of. Uh pretty much underneath the uh uh full-time and permanent providers as they go through or or awarded providers. Uh we wouldn't be looking at having to provide um basis of operations for them. That would be rolled into the uh the contract. But as this is an interim one, we uh the county is paying those costs for it. So we're asking for approval to adjust this based on a change of scope from uh the original expectations, as was discussed with the missionaries when we first um approved this contract.
You have a question to Matt? I'll change the motion.
I'll move to approve the proposed amendment to contract and authorize county administrator sign upon review of both the Boardman Fire and Michigan District Board. Second.
May I go to the second of the further discussion? Alan Fagan.
Hi.
All opposed? Mr. Terry. Okay, it's uh now we get to uh H. City Attorney request for ARPA funds for water and water system.
Now, you want to move forward? Um as we go through, uh we are nearing the exhaustion of the ARPA funds, which is quite frankly, a good good issue to do. Uh we have tried to avoid uh with uh use of ARPA funds uh payment for recurring costs. Um we've tried to keep it on uh loss of capacity uh that was incurred through COVID or with improvements that are one-time projects and such. Um if you've known in the uh if you've heard in the news, um the uh school district over in Salem uh was using ARPA funds to pay for ongoing costs and they just had to uh reduce over four hundred employees and reallocate another twelve hundred uh because they were using that on going end uh ongoing expenses. We've successfully avoided that. Um and with the last amount, um Heffner reached out to us for a infrastructure improvement, which would again be a uh kind of a one-time shot. And this is for their SCADA system, which is a monitoring system for water. Uh shoots off all kinds of alarms, public works. People love it because in the middle of the night, they get notified if a pump's down or if there's a leak or anything like else like that. Um John uh Doherty is the city manager uh pushed forward to ask for a request on that, asked how much money was left in the ARPA funds. And we identified this as a as a uh very uh valid uh project to include for consideration. So with that, I'll just turn it over to John to tell us a little bit more about the SCADA request and and where where you're at on that.
Okay, uh John Doherty, City of Heffner. So the cities, and this is right now, this system would be involved in our water supply and distribution. The city has had a SCADA system, which SCADA is supervisory and data acquisition. Another acronym, but you won't have to remember this on path today. Um basically, it's to monitor and control the distribution of of a system. And our existing system is no longer viable. It's it's not accurate. It's not consistent. And so what it had done in the past was it would monitor our reservoir levels and then tell us if we need to turn on a distribution pump or if we need to go from like reservoir two to reservoir three, or if we need to turn on one of the well pumps upstream to replenish the reservoir. Um and it it is worn out. It's no longer accurate. And this new telemetry and SCADA system would basically bring our process online. Um be similar to something you'd see in almost any industrial manufacturing situation. Falls the installation of new instrumentation, um software, and then the communications to provide communications so we can see where our process is at from our public works office. Currently, um you know, I kind of said earlier when we were discussing water supply, uh our purchase well is fourteen miles upstream from the city. That's a Lake Ranch. We've got two more wells along the creek and the inaccuracy of our current system, you know, if a reservoir says it's at sixteen feet, we're saying, oh, we need to uh replenish. Well, sometimes that's inaccurate, cause of overflow. We also have to physically drive up the creek, turn pumps on now that we're in irrigation season and our our highest water usage for the next four months of the year. It's often two trips per day for a public works employee. So you can roughly say I've got one dedicated employee spending half of their time running up and down, physically monitoring all of our system. This would um create an accurate system. Um it would lower our water waste. The various state agencies are very big on waste of water. You know, if there's a leak, you need to fix it right away. Well, our current system, we go up and say we're going to turn on well two and we're going to pump for six hours. And that will replenish our reservoir. Well, if if our flow's off, we're overflowing water, we're basically just pouring water onto the ground, the uh state is not likely to waste water resources. So this system, um we reached out to the automation group tag. They were the uh contractor that wanted bid for replacement of our system. It's looking at um last quote was two hundred seventeen thousand. It's looking at um, last quote was two hundred seventeen thousand, they started the design of the project. Um, speaking of this week, they're looking at probably September's to start installation. When we first looked at it, we said, okay, you know, we can, it was over a year ago and it was around hundred thousand dollars. Hundred to hundred forty depending on what options we went through. Um, we do have funds that, that you know, we can make up the balance. We are awarded the ARPA fund. For this and like alluded to, this isn't um, funding a. Uh, salary of somebody that, that we're going to be without after this fund's exhausted. This is for the actual capital project implementation. Uh, it's, it's going to uh, create a much more efficient system. And like I said, it'll be water save um. Better utilization of our time resources for the public works department. And then we will have the ability in the future as we go forward in the next several years of um wastewater. Improvements, we can also kind of, once we have this system in place, we can kind of waste water in on that. So um, basically it's modernization.
Okay, you have some questions?
I don't have any questions for John and questions about the project. I guess I just have comments about the. The list, you know, for the ARPA. One of the things that I know that the Irrigan Senior Center had requested money through this program and I don't see them on there. And we're ready with that.
Shot off information to them, companies. And with offers to help because they need to get a SAM uh, number on it. And every time when I, I called and talked to them and said, okay, here's this information. We haven't done anything back. And so we've been asking them to get, to get some of that. And uh, talked with uh, two different individuals at different times. And they, they haven't submitted back the request and, and to allow us to, to get that approved. And so it isn't on the list here. Um, we will be looking at some, um, quite frankly with the um. We have the um, how much? The six hundred thousand dollars for the ambulance service. I don't think we'll use all of that before uh, June thirtieth. And I think we've still got some money uh, in the amount that they're requesting to be able to go to that. So uh, I was just penciling out my numbers and I think we'll have enough to still, to still do that request. Um, if we can just get them to fill out those, those information, give us the, the, the SAM uh, information. So we can get them tracked and get them ordered.
So I guess on that, you know, a couple of times you've talked to me. I don't know if they've reached out to Kevin because, you know, I think that they were overwhelmed by the SAM process. And I know that Kevin helped the senior, the Hepner seniors fill out the process and.
That was, that was the actual thing in the email. I said, here's the information. If you've got it, great. If you don't, we can help. And yeah, Kevin will see if you didn't.
One of the things maybe to let somebody know when Kevin will be there in Irrigan. So if you're still there, there, once you place a week, it'll be straight generally.
It will become more steady uh, now that we're.
And through the audit and budget.
If I could comment, um, we also recall we have um, in the fiscal twenty-five budget. We did include a proposal to uh, find the government support kinds of these matters. Took that uh, request and basically tripled it in recognition for dollars. Three times out of uh, so I ended up in the budget and recognition of this other area of the county. Uh, could potentially reach but without a specific program in mind. That's not what it's always, but there, there is funding in the budget through uh, what do you like? But fun that um, or requests yet to be submitted. Um, if the SAM process is a little bit daunting, um, that may perhaps give a better route. Um, not just because of the requirements. We don't have to do a SAM check essentially for.
So we still, I mean, likely still have some ARPA funds to give to them, but we also do have that in budget for this.
So then is that, that's somewhat tied into, they have a very valid request and don't take anything and say it wrongly. But when I look at it, you know, with this, with approval of this request, we will spend fifty, that fifty-eight and a half percent. Of the total ARPA money in one community. And you know, as a representative of all the community. But I'm not going to lie and say it doesn't give me a little heart because there are, are needs throughout the county. And so it makes me wonder if the availability or the opportunities represented to the other communities to access this money. And it's too late in the game now. I understand that because you know, even without this re, re, request. We were fifty-three percent to one community.
Um, with that. We definitely haven't had a process for publicizing and, and putting this out for applications from, from. Uh, entities across the county uh, that, that has never been put in place.
You know, so I'll go back to, you know, just comments that have been made at different times, you know. And I think it revolves around some budget times. How do we go out and solicit? The community projects or whatever, we need to become available as well. You know, if you're in the know, then you know to go ask for the money. You know, it's just that it gives the appearance of that's how this is.
Yeah.
And again, not to say anything bad against your project because it's very worthy.
Um, that is one thing that I've talked with uh, Chair Sykes and at times with some of the S and P. Or um, the uh, SIP funds and for res dollars if we wanted to allocate a certain amount. For community projects and create kind of a annual submission deadline to publicize for, for those kind of things. There's some good and bad at that.
Yes, because it goes back to predates you obviously by a large.
Yes.
Process is that's is a term than.
And what a fun.
Yes.
Something that still remembered how I voted on that.
Um, and so.
Down, I look at some of the good things that funded, but it also remembers people I got in Irrigan.
Yeah. Yeah, and so we didn't have any kind of structure for that with the ARPA funds, um, I will admit. And so it's been, I wouldn't say, um. I don't know if it would say so much if people know, um. And most of the communities receive ARPA funds. They know how much is going out, uh, but it's, we didn't, we definitely. There was not an advertised effort to say, if you have needs, can talk, can talk with us.
And you know, just to add on to it is, I received a request, but I didn't, you know, submit it before I saw the city of Hepner. I mean, I'm not asking that that request, but if, if, you know, the, the Irrigan uh. Center is, they've been asking, so they're kind of at the top of their list, but you know. If money does become available, I don't know how much, over six hundred thousand, that we don't spend is. What and how are we going to allocate those? Cause I already have one request. Say in second place now, I guess you follow that. But back, back to your talking on the. If we allocated so much money, who, who, who look at the creds? See, they avoid this too. Yeah, because it just causes so much in a small county like this and you know, I mean, it just causes so much. Uh, animosity is just not working. So they've always the, the last.
Yeah.
Uh, but what do the, what does the creds do? It still goes out money, right? If they, they give it to organizations and what them have. What if we looked at uh. Uh, setting up a fund if we wanted to do this route. Give it to the cities and let them, at each city, based on your population or something, and say, okay, this is a fund. That you have to distribute and we write down the parameters of how we go out. You know, and I mean, they could take requests that they want, they would want to go into that. I would rather do it with the cities than with uh, other organizations, nonprofits or something like that.
But and I think with the creds, that's definitely a possibility. Um, with the ARPA funds, there's, there's such re, uh, requirement, federal requirements for auditing and everything. Even with this request, um, since it's a capital improvement. Uh, as we figure out the agreement, we're going to have to uh, more or less have an annual re, uh, audit. Uh, to make sure that these expenditures, expenditures were done and that we follow up with the. Yes.
The ARP is pretty much a done deal.
Done deal, but going forward, um.
But I'm talking about.
We're interested. I, I'm interested in doing that so we don't get these uh, one-off decisions.
Yeah, I agree. But I would look at it with giving a lump sum and not having the through bus sitting here, having to tell. You know, Little A and you know, um, Girl Scout, you know, it's, it's how many times we have this discussion, you know? And it's just not, well, sure, well, I don't know.
No.
Let's go. It, it's just, you know, so the way the creds, they go, yeah.
I mean, accident, another accident, but I'm not. Um, well, so. I don't know. Respectfully, this period of that approach.
Oh, okay, um, time to commission, no?
Uh, no, or establish a committee um, to. And we'll put some crap in it, very aligned with the strategic goals and vision. And handle those higher guitar.
Yeah.
Um, and establish it.
No, I.
Maybe to really um. Unless in such a program that's, is solely going to have reviews funded through, through general funds. The concern is that there's uh, any, any lottery dollars or other grand dollars that may end up applying. Um, ultimately the county bears the responsibility for monitoring and reporting of how it's abused. Um, and by completely handing that expression over to municipality, you know, fans that you would do it, but that we have a pretty significant, you know, monitoring.
Right.
Issues, so.
It's, yeah, and I remember I talked to you about this before a few, a couple of times. It's about a process to let people know. You know, the funds are available because it's just hidden there. And I'm sure you don't like. The thing about having a committee is then you get into this different area than the county, just like he said. So where do the, how do the people get committed, appointed to the committee? Whereas if you appointed it, if you gave it to the municipalities, that problem's already taken care of. Cause they have their own areas of the county and it's already defined through the population and the zip codes, how much money they would get if we went that around city. And so that thing's already taken. If you put your, get, get their committee, well, what do you got? You got five from the north end, four from the south end. Oh boy, you know, all the money is going to go to the north. You see what I'm saying? I'm not saying that would happen, but there you get into that argument again, see? It's just not a clean, clean, it's not as clean as the city. I think a people pointed needs and issues is that. I ended up on there, but I can't remember how I got appointed.
Well, that must be appointed by the county board, but if I, the commissioner prefer other. Cause I, I remember my dad being part of these issues.
Yeah.
And you have to remember, you've heard out with that. Well, it was from uh, Tippich fees at the, in the beach landfill discretionary funds.
Yeah.
Went to.
Everybody.
It's like, it, it's what gives current partner, when they make a document, it always brings it up. If they're in there and done that, nobody wants to get back to something. Not the end of the city, that would solve that problem, if they wanted to do that. And they, and they have elected representatives from the community, you know, I mean, most people are elected, so built in. Okay, back to the subject matter, I guess.
John moved to commit a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred seventy million dollars in SLRF. For ARPA funds to the city of Hepner for bringing the city's SCADA system and authorize staff for making necessary agreements.
Second.
We're going to second any further discussion.
Thank you.
Alright.
I'm gonna run back to city hall now. Continuation.
Yes. Thanks for coming and even had other reports too.
Yeah, and anybody reach out if they have any other questions regarding anything leading up to it.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure in the report how they're going to have the stakeholders or whatever you call it, meetings together. Sure, city's going to be part of that, especially because we got all these people giving them, you know, different. Report giving, uh, in kinds of services, we gotta have some kind of coordination and so.
Yeah. We'll work on them.
Gonna get done. Okay, now we go to the department reports. Local Public Safety Committee Council, what are we for?
Jesse Rules is on, and Jesse, if you want to start your video, if you, if you'd like, we can.
I tried to and it said, you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
I've decided to be nice and you try again.
Ah. Thank you. Okay, so um, the lipstick is still meeting every other month. Um, at the March meeting, we had the impacts team come and talk about their progress. So it was really fun to see something that went from an idea we had and. Things we wrote down to see it actually come to fruition with boots on the ground actually helping people. Um, so the goal of the grant is to save the county money. Uh, because these folks are the people who are using the jail the most often. And they've been arrested, some of them at, at least three to four times in the past year. Um, so the goal is to get them all the help that they need to be truly, oh, sorry. They also are, are people who also have a mental illness. So it's not just habitual offenders, it's folks who are offending because um, they probably need some help. So um, these girls are, these women are on the ground, they're, they're out there finding people that. The people that are, that need this help and they're providing it to them. They're taking them to appointments, helping them get their license. Um, going, helping them go to interviews. And so with the goal of them being fully stabilized and participating in society. So that was an interesting meeting in March. Um, I just a couple of weeks ago finalized my DEI certificate. So I am probably going to put a little report together for the July meeting unless we have some emergencies come up. That we have to have at that meeting um, that take priority. I will be talking about diversity, equity and inclusion in the end of July at our meeting. Um, and I think most notably lately is that we have formed a subcommittee to discuss the deflection grant. Um, as you are aware of, I'm sure the recriminalization of drugs at the state level. With that, the state has also offered money to counties who are willing to participate. In setting up a deflection program. It's basically similar to the diversion that people go through for DUI. Um, or at least that, that's how we think it's going to be. We're still in the process of setting up our program. Um, and so that money has actually, the planning portion of that grant, the seventy-five thousand has actually already been released to the county. And then there will be some additional funding biannually to keep the program going. So those are the things we're working on. Any questions?
I believe that, this is a question from Drago. Have we found out where the opioid money uh, was at and if it was available? Well, for the collection program?
So what we have about, we have the funds, um, that the opioid funding, you know, that is very expensive, yeah. We have a collecting value instead, correct? We, we have it. Understood that there was some session, yeah, yes. Our, our redemption program.
Yeah, and I think, I think that in a future presentation, she might come and speak to that. But I was just curious, we never thought of how much money there actually was. Hopeless the question.
Us, um, currently just over sixty, seventy thousand volume and opioid funds. It's another, maybe, yeah, maybe back in front of the report.
It's, that's fine. I was just curious if, we've talked about it in the deflection meeting, so I was curious if we've gotten any further with that. Just curious if we've gotten any further with that.
Good. Any further questions to Jessica?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the report.
Thank you, good day.
Yeah, see ya, first quarter of the report, Bobby, are you online?
I want to see her. No.
No. She could tell us how smoothly the election went, okay. Uh, Public Works monthly report, Eric, you around? He's not there either. Okay, there. We'll move on.
There he is.
Where is he?
He made it.
Comes around, yes.
Right to the front.
I would be named the city county administrators.
Oh, yeah.
I said, I think that's me regarding both. Good morning, commissioners.
How are you?
Doing well. Um. Have a short report, sorry for the lack of details, I was off last week and kinda squeaked it in at the end, but. Um. Um. During the month of May, uh, significant things to report, uh, facilities maintenance. Uh, there's two properties that we're working on, they're in tax foreclosures, uh, we've been working on getting those cleaned up, one of them's in Lexington. Um, we went in and pulled all the vegetation back, uh. Uh, just mowed things down, the the city was um concerned with their nuisance ordinances, so we've taken care of that, there's one in. In Aragon that just needs mowed, a lot of overgrowth there. Um, and so for now, we'll just keep those cleaned up until we go through the process of what, whatever the county's gonna do as far as. Um, auction of offer or what have you. Um. And uh also, I guess it's uh good to mention at this point that the facilities maintenance um in the parks. Um, is no longer under my umbrella as of of yesterday, the assistant county administrators taking those on those rules, we're gonna be working together. Through that transition, which is what I've just been doing for the last hour. Um, so this will be my last report, I believe, um, for facility maintenance and and parks. Um. The, I was gonna look up, I had some more details on the parks, um, parks are open, they're fully operational. Um. Though the main campground sites, um, with all the the full amenities, they they are still continued to be uh pretty much full. The OHB part, uh, was at forty point eight percent. Uh, capacity currently of this last week cuts for uh at fifteen percent, answer right at sixteen percent for the month of May. Um, so the the first weekend, they were all pretty much full, and that that's where their numbers are for the month of of May. Um, in in the roads, uh, they've been uh preparing for the paving and ship sealing projects that we have going on. The prep is done, they're actually working on on the uh paving and ship sealing right now up on Sunflower Flat. Uh, working on Bunker Hill still, Social Ridge and Liberty School. And the prep work for the contract paving up in the Boardman area is just about done, and they're, the contractors looking at beginning paving on the eleventh. That's all gonna work around what's going on um at the new field in in Aragon. Sorry, I own, it's the same contractor, so. Depending on how that works, it's it's not a problem, I just need to get my work done before the end of the fiscal year per per budget. And they don't think that's gonna be an issue, but they're gonna hopefully get what they need to get done at the the new facility for the high school and then move to us. So, and then those roads in in Boardman are Route Lane, Olson Lane, Portion of Tom's Camp and Peters, finally.
From Alden to the canal?
Yes, yes.
Alden, same line. Same thing, well, yeah, yeah, those have been in terrible shape for a long time, so, by the time beginning to those.
Yeah, any, any questions?
Um, no, you're talking about how you uh cleaned up a couple lots?
Yes.
Is there a, is that complaint driven, or do you have a process that goes through that? Cause I, and the reason I ask is I got a complaint with somebody in Hattler who said the lock that we we possess next to the roads, like, I didn't read, see if it was ours. And he used to say, yes, and so it's a mess, you know, leaves your eye, just gotta run down, worry about it, which is not. And so do we, do you have a, do you have a list of the repossessed properties that you kinda go through and look at, or? Do we, do we turn, is there a process if we hear complaints or uh to to look at these properties, you know?
Yeah, so so the the two that um Tony and I looked at and worked on were complaint driven. Um, I know that when there's a property foreclosure, I I know some of this because I called um our assessor and asked him some questions. About that process, and when there is a foreclosure. Um, I know that Tony, our facilities maintenance manager in the past, has gone in and done some remediation and cleanup and that. I haven't seen a procedure, you know, or 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 a policy, but I know there's many properties. And I talked to um Mr. Gorman about um. Maybe taking care of some of these and getting ready for auction or what whatever we need to do, but, oh, there's mine, if you wanna hear from Mike.
Bye, Mike, you're on.
Can you hear me? Can't sure if I'm unmuted or not, okay. Yeah, um, property tax foreclosures, uh, there's been challenges with those. For several years, at least since I've been assessor, um. There hasn't been a big effort by um administration or the, any of the commissioners to really deal with those, and we have several now. Um, unfortunately, there's uh due to a uh Supreme Court, you know, US Supreme Court decision. Um, uh, we're kind of, we can't really do anything with uh foreclosed properties until legislation. Gets passed to direct how we apply that um Supreme Court case. Um, but just for your background, um, when when I deed a property over, I um historically have informed administrator. Before we had the administrator, informed the county judge and the uh uh commission secretary. Um, and that's as far as I've ever went, as tax collector, I have no authority to do anything else other than deed the property's over. Um, it's takes an action of the commission um to uh liquidate them, auction them, sell them, uh whatever. I'm more than happy to help or be a part of uh creating a policy and a procedure. Um, and I've said, uh, you know, I've I've mentioned that to uh every, the last several county administrators we've had as well as commissioners, so. Um, it is, it is kind of an issue that really needs to be dealt with. Um, so, yeah, happy to answer any other questions if any of you have any.
Well, I agree with you because I think I've got four inquiries in the last two or three months. About properties we have, and of course, I talked to Matt, but he, and he told me about the lawsuit and everything, so it's kinda locked up, but also what I was just talking to him about. You know, taking care of the properties we do have, and it sounds like it might be a while that we're not able to unload these properties. But we're gonna be through the, through the summer, and I mean, you know, do we have waste digress on them, or is there, I mean. A a nor- a private property owner would get a letter from the city to clean up, you know? So I don't know if the county gets those or not.
But anyway, we did get a letter.
Oh?
We got a letter on the one in 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 Lexington.
Yeah, so.
That's what I responded to.
That's what I recommended to the property owner in Hattler, let's just talk to the city and have a southern county a letter, just like they would any other landowner, and then we'll see what we can do.
So, um, if I could propose, um. I I do have a list, and I can double check with Mike Gorman and then work with uh Eric and Tony to kinda create a um. A schedule for the ones that we have, particularly the ones that are houses, uh, that are, that have nearby neighbors that, you know, it becomes a nuisance and then hell hazard with. Berman and all that kinda stuff, weeds and that, so.
Um, yeah, I could, I. I I would think would probably look better in a public eye if we were proactive about that instead of, instead of waiting for a complaint.
Back to your policy thing, I mean, I remember in the past, the times, the, one time the commission got a house. And they just went out and advertised it, you know, that seemed to kind of hit miss to me, so. I mean, I sure would like to see some kind of policy, even other, you know, granted, we have, I guess we have more than we usually do now, but. It's gonna be ongoing, just something so that the public knows it's, you know, there's a lot of, not a lot of, but some of them think it's some kind of, you know, good old boy deal, you know? Uh, who ends up with those properties, so I would like to see a policy, I don't know about you guys, what to do with repossessed properties?
I think, like, particularly, we jumped off the stage, we got our quest about what, so you and I reached out to Mike, and I know Greg's weak as the interim at the time. And, you know, we'd asked about getting the policy.
I remember that.
Through everything else and other priorities, and now with Matt, with the ASA almost behind us and with the assistant administrator, I think that it's something that should be on the horizon.
I don't think it could be just what their other counties do, I mean, we might be able to, we're at the wheel, I mean, every county that repossesses properties, see, we must have a system to get rid of them, knowing. And we don't wanna hold on to.
I think Justin's, yeah.
Well, I was gonna, but Matt hasn't worked, I know that aspect too, just to clear, um, he's, I know, at our County Council admin meetings. Uh, he's been working with Greg on that, um, the issue hasn't been that lost to some, but I know there are thousands of priority to, not just. Kind of process where people are aware of maybe certain times, like, certain times of year, we're gonna do a sale at the courthouse staffs, not just like, well, maybe this weekend, they try to set a times. Um, and so I know, and I know that, obviously, and Mike was working on it early on, and then also Matt, I think, never worked with Greg on, so. I think this lawsuit aspect and how we try to eat the excess funds from a sale, again, just the background, that's the issue. Normally, we, you get foreclosed property, um, you would sell it, and then whatever, wherever you came from it, can keep. Now the idea is, well, we have as much tax and, well, this was owed to the proposer, um, based upon taxes. All right, we sold the property, wow, we made an additional twenty thousand dollars on top of what was going to the county linear costs. And now where does that money go? Well, needs to be helped, help try to find who the owner is, and where's, especially going on the process, and then. That's the issue right now, we're gonna figure out, if anyone ever back, go ahead, everyone.
Well, there's two, there's two thoughts somewhere, it's our property, so why should we take, you know, if there's an appreciation in price like anybody else?
That's a lot of change we don't get to.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, uh, I thought that was up in the air, but you just said that was not.
It's how that money is returned to.
Oh, someone has to.
And which owner, and which owner, and if we retain the funds in an interest-bearing account, do we keep the interest?
That's for.
And that's something to be discussed, trying to figure out, it was, it was a big topic in the legislature.
Okay.
All right, I responded to these uh complaints through Matt, Matt was the one that directed me to take care of it, and I have to keep track of of all costs. So I have those.
Yeah, because we attach that.
Hard costs, hard costs.
Yeah, tax bill, yes, that attaches to the tax bill.
You have another department for your company.
Well, having property management, yeah.
The road component, you know.
So, and as well, so how we complain issue, what if you get a complaint as a county road? Have we, have we, go forward?
I probably, as a commissioner, I probably, I probably prioritize it by uh safety, you know, you know, and then I have to put it on a list.
Yeah.
I have a list.
So, so if I get a complaint, I should come to you?
Yes.
With that?
Yeah, at this point, he's the maintenance operations manager typically, but that's gonna be me again here real shortly, so.
So, we, we, so, a few of us in the watered. In the water world.
You're always welcome to call me.
We went on a tour, and on the tour, it was obvious that that there was a road that was in much disrepair. Um, and it's, and I got, I got delegated to write the, the person who lived on the road, and so I got to hear about it. Um, so, and 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 it is in disrepair, my, I guess my question is, I need to understand, you know, what is, whether it was a county road or is a county road. Um, if it is under the county provision for repair, and that would be Baker Lane.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a county road.
From seventy-four up the hill was terrible.
It's a bad shit.
Terrible, and and has been for some time, so I guess my question is, because it came to me from the particular person was, how do we go about? Getting that prioritized, so what, how do we do that?
Yeah, so I was, as far as a commissioner, always welcome to call me, anyone with a complaint, also with words.
Yeah.
But I always pick up the phone, and I have the five-year plan, and you'll see the Baker Lane is on there.
Is on, and that's kind of what I was curious, so I can, cause I didn't have any answer.
Yeah.
He's like, you know, so all I'm looking for is if I can contact you, get some answers, so I can get back to the interview.
Yes, you can.
Or whole family complains about roads.
Sir, whole family complains about roads, I bet I can guess who the person wanted to drop. Baker Lane is terrible.
It is terrible.
And I, and actually, it's, well, it's good up on top, it's just the hill.
That's right.
Yeah. It's the great, it's not white and gray.
Yeah, it's not white and nothing, I said, I was in charge of county roads, it doesn't look like it meets.
Standards.
Standard.
What it did when it was built. Okay, the no standard.
Going away and.
Five-ton trucks, now they're, you know, thirty-five ton trucks, and it's not the poor bus drivers scared, and.
Yeah.
I will say, though, that um before we get to that project, I'm gonna have to do some patching out there because it's so bad.
It is that bad.
But I've had really struggle getting um additional width from landowners there, it's been a bit of a struggle. Yeah, so this year, this, the plan this year, this fiscal year, is we budgeted um for uh some engineering on that.
Okay.
And then the the next fiscal year to do the work, if I, plus I get it, that's the plan, okay?
Good, I just. If, uh, since you alluded to a change, go ahead and share them.
Um, our maintenance, our maintenance operations manager put us two weeks notice in. Yeah, so, um, not, not. Because of the changes at Public Works and the reorganization that we've been doing, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait, I'm not gonna jump, you know, into filling that position until we do a review. Of Public Works and, you know, how it should be cleaning up some uh job descriptions. Um, and it works out fine because the the crew is is finishing up capital projects, will be done by the end of June and move right into maintenance, so. They won't take a whole lot of, a lot of oversight, I'll be able to jump in and help uh where need be. So that's my plan, just to kind of hold off.
Got stolen lane, some private sector, yeah. Yeah, so, um, this, if the, if the commission would mind, um, just two points. Um, the parks, they have their fishing weekend, where it gets all stocked this uh this Saturday. Um, a lot of people take the kids up and have lots of fun with that. Um, up to fourteen years old on the, on the free fishing and that kinda stuff. Also, just a, just a question, um, we've had a lot of posts from uh about the transfer stations filling up. Was that, uh, just to let the commission know if they get any things. Uh, the north one has been because some communities have been having free dumps, and so it's free access, but the south one has filled up a bit. Um, I think they closed early on Sundays, is that just because of capacity, or?
It's that time of year, capacity, yes, and Sandy, would you like to talk a little bit about capacities at the transportation?
I sure can, um, yeah, it's the town of Lexington has given out their vouchers for the month of June, and so they have free dumping. And that, it it just tends to fill us up, and and it's always near the end of the the day on Sunday, so it it doesn't impact us too much. Um, we closed the north end was what you're referring to, that was due to an illness. So he got sick and had to leave, and I don't have relief, but we're trying to work through those hoops and we're getting them taken care of, but it's because of the free. Dumping weekends the city puts on, which we encourage that and we like that, and it helps the city, so we're working with it.
Thanks, Sandy. Um, if I can jump back on the the property cleanups, Mike, um. When I was preparing this report, I reached out to Mike, and and I'm glad I did, I learned a lot about, you know, the other properties, and I'm thinking, well, we just had two, you know, wasn't aware. So he and I discussed about coming up with some kind of a report that I could report on, hopefully next month, of where we're at, and which we have. Um, however, you know, Vince is in charge of that, and I'll, I'll help out any way I can, so. Whatever Matt tells me to do.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll send you the name of this guy and definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been going back and forth.
You bet, I'm, be happy to talk to him.
All right.
Anything else on Public Works?
Somebody, you guys got nothing else, right? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Okay. Thanks for God is, that's basically our department reports, four respondents. We have one listed revised, we have a force plan. Anything other than that?
That was it.
Um. Stuff would be commissioner reports. Anything to report to us, you want to talk about?
Well, I guess we did meet Monday and um, the job enterprise zone two. Core net and dispersed the final nine hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand went to the city of one. Fire, three hundred thousand to the city of Boardman's Police. And the final three hundred thousand dollars was split like a hundred thousand dollars to the moral county health district. Hundred thousand dollars to the moral county sheriff's department, and a hundred thousand dollars to the area.
And so, so, gross, it's all about.
Those two money for the last year is all the stretch now, but. Hmm. But, yeah. If you were the, if you were the, there?
It's, yes, it does, and I'm. What? Um, yes, um, it does, and we'll have to make some determinations, this isn't something that we requested of prez. Um, and uh. Uh, Kevin and I are gonna be looking at that. One of the things is just to. Uh, put it in reserve for future or, you know.
Building?
Uh, new building.
First of all?
It's, yeah, just, just a couple different things, and so. Uh, we'll be, we'll be finalizing some of those items and letting them know. I mean, quite hon- honestly, it's, um. The other entities to get this, use it to uh. You know, replace general funds or put it to capital plans, so. Uh, we don't wanna think of it just as a slush fund. Uh, for, for the sheriff to use, we want to put it to proper use and course, needs to be approved by this board as, um. And they can budgetary over something.
As a monkey, those don't be able to get past. Firstly, I was in, I was in a water, but I wasn't getting to uh listen in or I would have. So I guess I'll take off on that. So we've had our, been good, what we invited many meeting, um. Uh, we also did a tour as, I guess, well, it's Central County. Central County uh with the water issues, um. And I think that we are gonna, I mean, we've come into a consensus. Through the individuals and the entities to have a discussion. And hopefully come to some common ground and, and resolve some of the issues of, of the yellow beam water. Concerns, um, it's quality, it's quantity, not quality, but yeah. So I, I think that's going forward, um, I guess Tamara could help. She needed to do that, but I think everybody's talking, so, yeah, hopefully that will resolve itself. Um. I do, I am scheduled to meet with uh, with Doug McKay next week. Um, on the forestry stuff and I seen, I read the letter and um. I think that Alan Chase had some really good points. I agree with him. Pretty much wholeheartedly, so I would bring that forward to Doug McKay next week when I talk to him. So. And, and that.
Well, I'm, can I have anything to report on?
I guess, for instance, a lot of time during that year, the broad banking portion that is adopted by here for the next year.
Yeah, and we did put out for this. For the project. And we reported on that, so it's done. The uh. Michael from Chilwell was at the. Was at a senior luncheon yesterday, he gave a speech and I. Got up and. Fill his, you know. You're not gonna teach your own home, but I will, told the story about how they funded the original. The administrator really got us organized, you know, I mean. We had people calling us, other counties. Bigger towns, like. And what they, how did you guys get where you're at, you know? Cause uh, we were, we really had our act together and that was because some of them. Funded and we got a good guy too, Kevin Moss.
Yeah.
And then the county did funding after that, and that, that's what really curious is, we didn't know what the heck we were doing, everything getting done, I mean. Thought that we were stupid and it was. I mean, some, some counties, they're at the, they're at this point in the game and they're going. Gee, we need to. Form a, really call it a. D A C.
Form an advisory.
Yeah, I mean, when you define it back, you're like, wow. We play to, we're already getting ready to. Let out uh. RFPs, you know, so. Anyway, I publicly thank him. He's a, he's a pretty outgoing young man. It's amazing how much cheese is there up there. Just huge amount.
You should have seen the auction that they had at the booster rack.
Yeah.
There was a stack of cheese that wouldn't fit on these two tables that they auctioned off, and it was, oh, it was amazing. Yeah. Yeah. Well, they do a lot for the community.
They do.
They're good, they're good. Good partner.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, yeah, I guess I don't have anything else. To go into the reading, we got. And before you just go and do everything, so, okay. With that, uh. We are going to go into executive session, which by chief here. Okay. Okay, we, we're gonna hold two seconds.
One executive session.
Do I have to read both of these?
Yes. That part, they yes.
Yeah, I have a problem doing this, both at the same time, read one, read the other, and we're not gonna come back out and look.
I don't know if they're about exactly, I don't think.
No, those decisions to be made.
No decision made, yeah, that's good, okay, so. Okay, the board can afford commissioners, while that now meet executive session, pursuant to RS one nine two dash six six zero two I, which allows the commission. To meet an executive session, review and evaluate the employment. Uh, related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee of staff, and for the rest of your question. Open here. Representatives of the news media and the union staff should be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any deliberations. Or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session of previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end, uh. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session, welcome the audience back. Now, our other one is the local county board commissioners will now meet in this session pursuant to RS one nine two dash six six zero two D. Which allows the commission to meet in the executive session to conduct deliberations. With persons designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations. Representative of news media, designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations. Or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, you will return to open session and welcome the audience back to the room. Okay, and with that, also we'll repeat, there will, there will be no. Uh. The public, uh, there will be no decisions made. Uh, the board will not make any decisions when we come out of these executive sessions. So with that. We will go into the executive session.
So just a quick clarification, we do have a member of the media uh online, but we have no other participants uh via Zoom. Unless, do we need to keep them? Included? Okay.
Well, I thought that, that's been, our policy is that if the one thing, you know, participants via Zoom, then we exclude them.
Oh, that is, okay.
Okay. So.
Yeah, whatever.
Not excluded, but just that they can come personally.
They, they become a person, but they can't, they can't zoom.
Okay, yeah, I think the only reason the, the Zoom aspect would be. They're giving the same rights to anyone else coming in, so the public may have participated by Zoom. Or they think they have session already scheduled, and there's no reason not to allow the press to hold, they'd be able to stay in Zoom accounts, they don't need you for us. Right, but we're not using any awareness or anybody else.
It's an honor, I just.
Not excluded either. Thank you. Ingrid. Close.
Yeah, I think I would like to roll that one out.
Yes.
A little over there. One minute.
But not involving.
Yeah.
All the meetings and here, we're pressing this.
It's just the way they slow up it, so. It's.
Your chair. Is your chair being done?
Yeah, I just got it.
Yeah, I don't like that chair.
No, it's terrible, it's when you keep evidence.
Okay. We're back in open session, um, there'll be no acting from the board as we announced before, so. Uh, is there anything else to come before the commission?
No.
Okay. Very none. We can adjourn. We'll still come in.
You need to sign this.
Yes.